I've called a meeting order. Yeah, we asked you out in square four.
That's right.
Yeah, my father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Just ask him to watch over us, keep us safe. Be with us, give us some wisdom as we make decisions that's best for the county. Just be with all the families that's lost loved ones. Just ask that you touch a special grace upon them and comfort them. Be with our, uh, our kids and our parents as they get back to school tomorrow. Just bless them with a good year. Give them safety and protection. And thank you for all that you do. Give them safety and protection and thank you for all that you do for us. Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Let me lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I wanted to remind everybody after our last meeting, there was a lot of conversation going on back there. With these new mics that we got, if you don't want your conversation to end up in YouTube or in the minutes, be careful because it picks up what y'all saying. Sometimes when it transcribes, it sort of messes up the machine when it's trying to transcribe the minutes. So, Fett, if you would get to the form.
Sure. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
For a quorum for today's meeting, Bechtold, here. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yep, here.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
You're here?
Yep, yeah, here.
And you're here twice.
I got two names.
All right, so Fett, I will take the motion to approve the agenda. Does anybody have any additions?
I have, sir. I noticed, um, this morning that I did not add, uh, the normal spot for constitutional officers in the event that they do come, so I apologize for that. So, if we can leave that open when they do come and we can amend it at that time.
Yeah, if they show up, I'll just stick them in there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second. Call it a run.
All right. On the motion to the approve the agenda for August twelfth, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Almost forgot my name.
As I was writing.
All righty, Fett, we'll take the approval of dis- dispersments. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do. Um, there are two different lines for radio tower. Are those the only two radio towers that we're paying rent on at this time? Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I take a motion to approve the dispersment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, on a motion to approve the dispersments as presented, Ms. Bechtold?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Next is the approval of the minutes. Uh, there's one for the twenty-eighth. That was a special call, though.
Yeah.
So, um, does anybody have any corrections or questions?
I make a motion. We approve the ones for July twenty-eighth as presented. I wouldn't hear from the twenty-second. That's why I separated.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir.
I'll second.
Motion second. Call it a run.
All right, on the approval for July twenty-eighth, special call meeting minutes, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Take the motion to approve the minutes for.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
No more discussion.
On a mo- on the motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Ms. Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Up studying.
And Mr. Turman. All right. We are up to presentations.
Dr. Cromer, we should come down.
Dr. Cromer's coming down.
He's hiding. There's a snake in there.
It's the hair pit. This is rare. I got extra time. I'll just.
Are you ready for tomorrow?
Normally I'd get you back on track, but I don't know what to do to take my time now. No, we got, we got a lot going on. It's the most wonderful time of the year for us. Also, very busy time, but we got a, got a lot happening. We did move our meeting, uh, from last night to last Thursday just because open house was last night. Um, we had a great turnout. It was, it was good to, to get families in the schools. Saw lots of, lots of photo opportunities, um, at every building. Um, but at our meeting, we, um, we had a presentation. We, um, there are summer residential governor schools in Virginia and we had a student selected, Marissa Carrillo, selected to go to Radford University for a three-week intensive. It was really great. I'll have to take a picture of her project. She brought back. We're gonna, uh, post it in the school board office. Um, she did a piece on, um, the inactivity of, of citizens in the political process. And it was, it was, it was really good. And, and so, um, we enjoyed her sharing her work there for her, from her three weeks on Radford's campus where she got to, um, experience what it's like living in a dorm as well. And having, so that, that was really good. Um, and we're, we're glad that we, we set aside some funds for students who are selected. So that was paid for. Uh, she, her family did not have to pay for that. Um, we have a new designee with Mr. Ratcliffe's, uh, departure. Um, so Tammy Hubbard will be my designee should I be out. Um, but that's pretty rare. So, uh, you should always see me. Uh, did our crisis action plans, reviewed summer maintenance. You know, summer, it seems so long, but six weeks is not a lot of time to get stuff done when you don't have students in the building. So, just a couple of the things that we were able to do this summer, um, put a new fence, or actually a fence, there was no fence there around the Indian Valley Elementary School playground. Um, the, we still have several buildings, several rooms in every building that have, um, older floor tile. Um, and so when it starts to chip, we need to get it up because it has asbestos, um, which also costs, it costs about seven thousand dollars a room to do. Um, and that's with our guys laying the floor. So, um, we're only able to do one room, uh, this summer, but we hope to get back in the rotation and do a couple of floors each summer and get all that taken care of.
Are they in every school?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Indian Valley may not. There may be that one room at the end, but I think, I think they did it. Um, the alternative education building, we, it needed a new roof. Um, and when we were there, we noticed the soffit and gutters were also in need of repair. So, we, we've put a, a facelift on that and given it some new windows there on the front 'cause we, we need that building to be in use for a lo- a little bit longer. Um, although the roof does have a, a little bit of a sway in it, it, it does look good and, and fresh and no leaks. Um, obviously, we remulch all of our school playgrounds. We have, um, the sidewalk at the back of the cafeteria at the high school where students are dropped off. We, um, kind of gravelled that because the grass was getting worn down, but it, it looks really bad. So, we, we were able to bring the sidewalk out to the curb and then down a little bit. So, when students unload off the buses, they unload onto a sidewalk, which is also safer. Um, as you know, I told you about our, using our security grant money to replace the locks on CES and FES doors. Um, we, there were some plate, some issues with the lockers at the CCDC since day one. We've been working with the company to try to get those fixed. They found, they replaced every lock on those lockers this summer and that was all under warranty. Um, same thing with some floor tiles. There were still, there were some coming up, um, since day one. Kind of hollow, not really adhered to the floor. So, they came back and fixed all those this summer. Um, we were able to fix one of the three units on the Willis Elementary new gym, the three, uh, HVAC units. The other two are still running on one compressor, but we're, we're hopeful that is part of our capital improvement plan in this year that we'll be able to, to have a plan to start replacing some of those. And of course, it, everything just looks so shiny with our custodians working so hard stripping and waxing all the hallways and classrooms. It's just, you can see yourself in them right now. Um, we do, we have two projects just for clarification that at the high school that are for donated funds, we're seeking donations to assist with those because we, the budget does not cover replacing the track and then finishing the, the field house, um, there on campus. So, those, those projects are still, um, looking for funds to, to be finished. Um, but everything else should be ready to go for tomorrow. We did have a, um, strategic plan update just for the end of the year. And one of our, you know, our number one goal is obviously student learning and growth. That, that's our main focus is that students are learning and being successful. And, um, we were very excited this year to learn that from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, that Floyd was, um, in the top ten in the whole state for divisions in SOL games. So, our students performed in the top ten, um, in gains across the state. So, we're excited to see that. We, we still have some areas we're, we're working on and we're, we're focused on. Um, so we're really excited to think about how we're gonna grow from this year to next year because of everything we've put into place this summer. Um, had a great summer school, great CTE farm-to-table opportunity. Um, we're starting this year with, uh, the communities and schools, Appalachian Highlands. We joined on with them, um, this summer. They, they're really, um, uh, they have a lot of schools out in southwestern Virginia. And, um, they, so they have, it's grant funded and they fund a communities and schools coordinator. And we started at the high school. And so, they do a lot of parent engagement, a lot of attendance support, also do some one-on-one and small group counseling with no, um, strings attached. A lot of our, you know, our in-house, um, school-based clinicians and, uh, therapeutic day treatments. They have income requirements and a lot of paperwork. This is, this is able to be run with, if there's a need, we get to meet it. Um, so we're really excited to set that up and hope that it will be able to expand into our elementary schools in the coming years. But that also is, again, with grant money. Um, so it depends on if there are enough funds and fundraising done with the foundation to get that, get that funded. Um, I think that's, we had great, great kickoff last week with teachers coming back. Um, wonderful PD. We had great tech fest. Every summer, we have our annual, um, kind of in-house professional development. It was football themed this year. Had great, we had a speaker, um, from Virginia Tech come and, um, just really help our teachers understand what employers are looking for. And then we had eighteen sessions for our students, our teachers to attend and door prizes. So, thanks to our community for stepping up and providing some door, really good door prizes for, um, everyone who attended. Um, great, uh, in-house, whole division PD. On Friday, we had lots of talks about, uh, grading and assessments. Continuing to line that up. And we had the, uh, Virginia Teacher of the Year speak. Um, he's from Roanoke County, in which that's really good to represent southwest of Virginia because as you know, um, sometimes people in Richmond think that the state ends, uh, about Roanoke. So, um, he, he's got, uh, all of us rooting for him there, uh, as he begins his tour as, uh, state teacher of the year. So, it was a good start. And also, we have, obviously, you know, we're building a better future together. So, I'll give you those little decals as we kick off another good year.
So, you're fine?
All right, yep.
I'll be happy to.
It's very nice.
Answer any questions you got.
On the field house?
Mm-hmm.
That came through. Donation from private, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
Could you explain that? 'Cause I've had people confront me that, why are we building that field house? And I tell them, I said, you know, that king fu, uh, it's not costing taxpayers, what I'm trying to say.
Not costing anything. We had a, a couple of years ago, um, a large trust wanted to donate money.
Trying to think of names.
And so, that was the decision. Well, that would be great to have that and it would house the golf simulators and be able to have a space for, uh, indoor space. It was not gonna be heated or air, air-conditioned, any of that, just indoor space to add for practices, especially in the spring when gym space is at a premium, when rain or cold cancels your baseball track and all, all the things, soccer. Um, so, yeah, that is complete donated. We, the school board has not put any money into it. No county money has went to that.
I, I just want you to clarify that so that people on YouTube don't stand because, you know, I tried to explain to them, it, it wasn't tax money.
Right.
You know, it was a good heart of some citizen.
Right.
And, uh.
Right.
So.
And same thing with the track. The track is the same way. It's gonna be over three hundred thousand dollars to replace that track. And that's not in the budget. You know, we have, we have three hundred thousand dollars. We need to be replacing some HVAC and paving some parking lots. So, unfortunately, that gets, that gets put out to citizens and, and good people to donate money as well, so.
Right. That's good, so.
Yeah, I do. Um, so that Appalachian Highlands Foundation, um, that's been around for quite some time. I'm really, really glad to see.
Yeah.
I've never understood why anything like that isn't, so kudos to you and your staff.
We're excited to see if it grow, you know, we'll be the first one in region six to kind of take it on. So, we'll see how it, how it grows.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, we are, yeah, I mean, I think that's great. I don't know why people hadn't. How many new hires and faculty did we have?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty. We had thirty last year, thirty new teachers last year, twenty this year. Wow.
So, twenty new. And can you, uh, explain to the board and, uh, our listeners out there, any changes in the admin?
Yep, we did with Robert's departure. Um, we kind of, we did some restructuring, always looking at ways to be more efficient. Um, and realized that, you know, probably don't need a full assistant superintendent for a small division. We have Tammy as my designee. So, we made a director of secondary instruction instead of assistant superintendent. So, that dropped it down a pay grade and, um, then made, changed Tammy's title. Tammy Hubbard was Director of Literacy Assessment Federal Programs. And really, she was handling a lot of elementary things. We made her Director of Elementary Instruction, which she has her same job, just took on some math and social studies and science. And then made that Director of Secondary, um, Instruction. And Travis Kentrell, uh, is, is now in that position from the high school. Uh, so that opened his assistant principal position open at the high school. Um, and Daniel Queston Berry, uh, was, was hired in that role just, just last week. Um, so, good, good, quick, uh, turnaround to start the year. So, that, of course, then made his, his social studies position open at the high school. And we're hoping I'll have a call back when I get back to the office that that person has accepted that. Um, but those are the more administrative changes that, that we've had, shifting some things and shifting responsibilities and figuring out all the things that, uh, need to be done by, by who now. So, it's, it's been good, though.
Well, good. Well, it sounds like good movement. Uh, the twenty new hires, were they spread out across the system?
Yep, they were. Every school had at least one.
Okay.
Some, some more than others. And, and some, we, um, you know, I, I, I don't mean this to be mean, but we, we, we have high standards. And if people can't do them, we, we kind of created some of those openings because we like things to be a certain way.
Sometimes it's a tough job.
You got, you got it. Yep.
Gotta do what you gotta do.
But we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a parent, I appreciate it, yeah.
So, we got this, this staff this year, this new staff, you know, you always have several, you know, really, really bright ones coming in. They're very excited. But as a whole, the twenty, we had two days with them last week. And it was, we just kept saying, oh, my gosh, they're all strong. Like, they're all just really, really good. And of those three that I hired, um, I, I do second interviews with every teacher. And three of them said Floyd is where I wanted to work. Floyd is where I, my first choice. That's, you know, where I wanted to be.
Sounds great.
Yep.
Are there any, um, are there any vacancies still other than that social studies?
Social studies, we have behavior specialists. That's a pretty specialized thing that we can't find. And speech language, so we'll have to contract out for some of that and that will get pricey.
All right.
But hopefully, those will come back. We'll get those.
She just took my question. Sorry. She asked my question.
And school counselors, we, those are really hard to find. We've been lucky.
So, we still have a school counselor position?
Yeah. We, we have, um, one that we had kind of shared between the high school and PD. We're, we're just not, they're not out there, so we're just not gonna fill it right now and structure some things differently. And hopefully, with this communities and schools, they can pick up some of that load at the high school and we'll work on supporting Floyd Elementary.
That's another one of those areas that they're not going into.
They're not doing it.
And it's creating holes as it is here. Did you, did you get all your bus drivers in place?
Oh, yeah. Knock on wood, we have no bus driver vacancies. No. We, Paul does a great job.
I know you were looking at a few there too, and I just wondered if you were there.
We need instructional assistants for all those listening. Anyone want to be an instructional assistant? We need a couple of those that have come open last minute, so.
Okay. All right. I guess they could visit Floyd County Schools.
Yep, go to our website and that's where you'll be.
Well, sounds like.
No, no.
No, I was just gonna say, well, how's the, how's the daily attendance look compared to last year at this time of start of school?
Um, we really don't know until we, really and truly until Labor Day because so many schools start after Labor Day. That's when we really see there's so much in and out that first couple of weeks with people moving. Um, we're, we're up in some schools and down in others as we think right now, but it all depend on who shows up tomorrow.
That'll be a question for next year.
For September, I'll have, I'll have a better, yeah, that will be about the time. We'll have a better grasp on it.
Well, it looks like if you're starting out, at least employee-wise, in better shape than they have for several years. Well, it looks like if you're starting out, at least employee-wise, in better shape than they have for several years.
Yep, we're we're doing good.
That's good.
We're we're very excited.
I guess this is an old man question. Why is school starting earlier every year? You know.
We're actually about a week, a little bit, a few days later than than it was like August ninth and things. So we're at least the thirteenth. Um.
Old Foggy, when he used to go to school, we didn't start till the Monday after Labor Day.
Yeah, that's a long time ago.
Long, long.
Oh, I didn't know say that.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean it quite like that.
I didn't know say that.
I mean, I don't even know my kids ever did it. Maybe next.
Well, and a lot of it, the calendar committee, we have a committee and we have parents and um that serve on that and staff that serve on that. And they like to start as late as possible and get out as early as possible when you're trying to get a hundred and eighty days. They like they like to be out around Memorial Day before is even better. And um and so when the days just stack up, that's that's when it that's when it starts. Especially since, you know, the high school would like to finish that first semester before Christmas break. So they can take all their exams and SOLs before break and then come back and start new classes, so.
Yeah. I did know that Patrick County started last week.
Yes.
Well, if some get their wishes at the state level, you're gonna be more set up like the junior colleges than you are the high schools.
Carol. Yeah.
And you're just gonna have each section with a break in between and it would be even earlier.
Right. Well, my my granddaughter teaches in Carroll County. And we was talking the other day when we went to UVA back, that she's looked at this year-round thing. And she said she had to, I'd say.
Yeah.
The way that it's set up, you know, because you still get this long break, but you gotta condense the year all the way around.
We kind of have that depending on the winters we have. We'll have a little two-week window.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, with all the fog we've had so far in August. I'm telling you.
David Becker, oh, please, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
Next, so we got no.
Oh, yeah.
Have a good year.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
Thank you for what you've done and what you're doing.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jessica.
We will see you next month.
Yep.
Thank you. Alrighty, David.
Got two extra minutes. Look at that, Jessica.
Shaking shaking his head on that foggy morning.
No, we're not. We're not gonna go with that.
Yeah, well.
We watched the caterpillars. That's what we.
I do both.
But the caterpillars will lie to you quicker than the foggy morning.
That's correct. And I'll tell you what, I have seen very few caterpillars this year.
Uh we will actually, we've, you know, we're always doing something related to winter weather. Probably start have our big district-wide meeting probably sometime in October. Have our dry run for equipment, uh probably sometime in October. That's where we're like, we pretend there's gonna be a storm the next week. Get all our equipment ready. Um mechanics from our Salem District shop, evaluate all the equipment to see how well they they did and getting everything ready. It brings up a lot of a lot of things that need to be worked on, equipment, so we, you know, then spend the next couple of weeks fixing some stuff so all of our stuff's ready to roll.
Have contracts already been put out or?
Yeah, yeah, well, well, we're always in the middle of signing up, you know, we got the major ones, but you know, we do a lot of higher equipment. Local people that uh that have just maybe just a piece of equipment that they wanna uh use during the winter. We're always signing up that stuff, so anyway, right now I got uh um summer weather things for our dishes, you know. Either too dry or too wet or there's a storm or something like that. So at least I've got a large list of gravel roads that we machined. I'm gonna go through all those. What we are trying to do is um now we're in a new fiscal year, uh make a big push to get all the re-cleaned up. Kind of held off on that for a couple of reasons in the late spring. Um one, we were hired on a lot of these, you know, large pieces of equipment to get it. Um and second of all, we had to do a lot of patching for ahead of the overlay schedules. So a couple of things led to kind of leaving some of that stuff, as you all probably noticed on the side. Uh so now we get to get into that. Um mostly in the check area, Willis had some, so we did some, and did some with Willis area. But Willis area's also got some guys working on Reedsville Road. That's your six-year plan project that's going on right now. Um the other six-year plan project, Hope Road, finished up. We got that surface treated. Reedsville's still a ways away. Um other than that, just some, you know, some patching. Had the Motrim out, um Hubbard Lane, Kyle Weeks Road, Rushford, Nandier Road. Just shoulder work on Beaver Creek, Connor Grove and uh cleaning out some pipe on Griffith Creek and on Eames Road. Chasing these isolated, very, very isolated, very heavy storms that seem to come down and just wipe out a small section.
Yeah.
There's more on the way, yeah.
Yeah. Um also, as it's all, you know, I'm interested to uh Floyd County residents is um Route Eight, we did some work on in Montgomery County on Route Eight. But right at that curve at uh Canker Brook Road, uh after you get up the hill from uh from crossing Little River. Cut that right bank as you're going north on there to really improve site distance. I've been to the site of several accidents right there, Canker Brook Road, on the county, so knock that back. Called some, you know, we had to get in the lane, so we hit flag traffic, you know, it was all. All the things that go along with that, but I think it was a good project.
It helped a lot, but there's some some more room down there.
Well, it's one of those things, you start chasing, it's it's an interesting thing. When you're driving around, you see see something, you think, oh, if they just knocked off that one little spot, you'd be like, see. But that but it's never, it's never just that. You can chase a curve, you know, so much in trying to uh to to get the site distance, yeah.
Right, yeah. But I've been saying that about, you know, right at Wall Creek Mill Road, that big old bank, if they'd cut that, people would be able to see a little bit. Especially in the summer and the winter, it's not an issue.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we we've done a couple of those. That's one of the things we've done with our our safety funds. We did it at the intersection at Cold Mountain Road a few years ago, cut that one back.
You shave that curve off, you still gotta lay it back so that you don't have a lot of washouts.
Yeah, yeah, you can't leave it.
It takes a lot of land when you.
Yep.
Yeah, that.
So anyway, um that's like I said, I'm gonna go through the list of gravel roads. Did a couple of pipe replacements also, Level Road and also, so.
So that has been replaced?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you.
Alright, so that's all I got.
Sure.
I'm glad you brought up Reedsville Road. Um I've gotten some calls about it, even though it's not in my district, about how long it's taking to get it worked on. And are are all the property owners in agreement with the uh with the work that's being done?
Yeah.
Is.
Yes, we, yeah, yeah, property owners sort of seem to be, seem to be pleased. Um but we couldn't, you know, get them, you know, we got to the board, but they wouldn't um donate right. Well, we just didn't do the project that last tiny little bit, so.
Alright. Um and thank you.
And I think I forgot to mention, this week they are doing some patching on uh seven eighty-seven.
Yeah, yesterday.
Yeah.
They were out there yesterday. Thank you. I got a call about that yesterday. So thank you.
Uh Lucas Grove, if um if you maybe can take the greater now Ponderosa out of there to Parkway. It's a little rough. And then uh Stewart Road, do you know if there's any opportunity uh in the future that y'all might overlay it? Or do some more patching? It's pretty rough.
It's the the paves.
Yeah.
Certainly, yeah. We'll be, we'll be doing some more patching. Uh overlay, I I don't know if it's on the schedule or next year.
Yeah. Pretty rough state. And that's that's about it.
Thank you.
Oh, just wondering when the paint crew get back on Rally.
Check.
And is it the same crew that's gonna come back and have they already come back and readjusted the parking spaces?
Uh uh, yeah, I don't know. We're working to the count.
I noticed it. And I guess it's changed specs to save money, but it used to, you had straight lines. Cause you notice around in other parts of the town, you know, like if you have a parking space here, it went all the way up, you had that straight line. That may, that may have helped in keeping things straight.
You're being very tactful this morning.
I don't think the sidewalk is poured the way the parking, you know, but uh I I had to ask, I was asked to ask about those two things.
That's impactful. That was very tactful. I I've offered.
I tried. Well. They, I mean, thank the crews for what they're, I know they're busting their butts trying to get everything they can done. I know it's a lot to do. Uh we do still need a lot of patching, but it's all over the county, you know that.
Yeah. Will we catch it?
But please pass on thanks for what they're doing.
I will, thank you.
Uh thanks to you, cause I know you have to put up with these other areas more than we do sometimes, so.
Yeah, thank you. Uh yeah, thanks to all the crews doing all the work. Um the blowing has been done. I know it's continuing. So that's that's important. A couple of them, Kennedy School Road, Highway Road, Thompson Road, you know, that whole section sometimes, unless I bring it up. Seems to sometimes get forgotten. I don't know if it's on your list, but if not, it needs to be with some uh patching as well as uh motor grating. Um and I know it's hard because, you know, one minute it's fine, then we get these, you know, gully washers and the next thing it's not anymore. Um Thomas Farm Road also is in great need. Um that has that perennial ditching situation that we've talked about for a long, 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 long time. So I think the problems on Thomas Farm will end if we can get out there and ditch. And I know, as you've explained to us, uh how difficult it is to get approval to do ditching, but hopefully you can do that. Um everybody that lives out there is patient, but it's, you know, just causing some difficulty in the road.
It was on the list of roads that we had done some greater work on, but they probably didn't do the ditching part, yeah.
Yeah, but if, yeah, if you get the greater work done, but not enough gravel is put down or if there's problems in the ditch. And then that washes whatever gravel you do put down, you know, it's that vicious cycle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um thank you also for the work that you've done with designating a crew to do all that brushwork. Also, thank you for removing the said pile that had been in a certain location. We really appreciate that very, very much. And we don't take for granted the efforts that were involved.
Yeah.
By all of you in your office as well as here on this board to get that done.
Absolutely, appreciate it, yeah.
But we understand why it was there. It was just its length of time and, you know, all of that. So really appreciate it. And it it just shows when we all try to work together and, you know, be patient and and get things done the way they need to be done. You know, I I think what we can do is learn from this situation maybe a little bit more. And, you know, when we have a, when we have a storm like we did in February, then I think we all need to get right on board right away. And really try to, even if we have to call in resources, and if we all work together like we did this time, you know, just to get moving on this. Maybe we don't have to wait until August, you know what I mean? Just, you know. So, yeah, I think we've got a really good working relationship, so, yeah.
Sure.
I uh thank you for that and uh I think that's it. Uh thank you for the um um pipe replacement on Level Road.
Yeah.
That was getting kind of serious.
Yeah.
Those resources we were promised the last year didn't happen.
I know. I know. I know, but I mean, you know, just as long as we can continue to work and, yeah. That's what it takes.
Everybody else was gentle this morning. They were, they get to me already.
Exactly. I don't know if, I don't know if they've gotten with, I can't remember his name, on Emmanuel Road under their, under their list.
Yeah. Yeah, he he called me the other day after we was up there. One evening, they, he told me they was out of town for a couple of weeks. It was a little strip come right over me from Doug's Fur to Black Ridge. We got four inches of rain in just a little bit, you know. And I mean, Meyer Fort Creek was out of its banks, it was across the raids and everything. Four driveways I had to put back about third time in two weeks. But anyway, he said it washed, you know, where they made the berm along the edge, uh it cut food. And he said now he's got a strip of gravel down food and and right as it went in his pond. I just want to see if if there's anything y'all could do about that. Then up here just about CW Harmon's on the right, uh I sent you an email and I don't know if I sent it right or not. But anyway, um he says he's almost got hit twice pulling out of his driveway because of uh the overgrowth out there. And then at that bridge, uh when I talked to you. It's not y'all's fault. Mother Nature did this to us, I reckon. But anyway, you know, they came in and cleaned it off on that guard rail. I don't know what kind of grass it is, but man, we had a few showers of rain, that stuff. And it's, you know, big, it's almost like a bush. But now I have to, when I'm crossing the road with my tractor or truck, I have to put the front end out in the road before I can see back up towards hills. And it's sort of spooky sometime the way they come around that curve. Let's see. Um we had talked, and this is in Coindes District, we swapping ratings. We talked about Indian Springs.
Yeah.
Um just so that people would know, you know, I asked you, you know, to leave that on six-year plan. And if you have any money that's too small to use on another project, that maybe you could upgrade that raid. Cause you know, that far end, it was not but about half a mile. But the last quarter mile, I mean, if you run a motor grader through there, you'd have to back it back out, you know, hit some there.
Is that all still um maintained by VDOT or did, were some of it discontinued, some of that road discontinued maintenance?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about from Duncan Chapel to the state maintains, uh in the state maintenance.
Right.
That last quarter mile through there.
Okay, that last quarter, cause I know part of it was discon, I believe part of it is discontinued maintenance, part of that road.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but that's on the other end, past where I'm talking about.
Right. Right.
Cause there's, you know, that one place, you know, fences almost to the edge of the raid.
Yeah, no, when we think, when it comes up, when we uh start talking to property owners, we're gonna try to get it the same width all the way through.
Right, yeah. That that would really help a lot and uh when I went in.
That's one of the main things on one of ours is the turnaround. So we, if our road, we gotta be able to turn equipment around.
Right. Right, and from that road, you don't, you don't have any, and uh. It was nothing I was thinking about, but a lot of our roads is really needs machines. Me and my neighbor sort of straightened tires up a little bit because we're jumped to ditches. You know, there's so much grass in the ditches now, you know, that turn it out the raid.
No, probably the ones I didn't get this month on this list, I'll get.
Reach Road especially, I I go around there every now and then. There are a couple of places that uh in the curves, the water jumps. I guess it comes around that curve so fast, it jumps and just cuts the road, gets across the road. Yeah, um there he's asked me about, you know, that this end of Black Ridge where it looked like that pavement at less. It's got a drop. If I remember right, a few years ago, y'all had built that back up. Cause uh I guess it's wet weather springs under or something, close it out and it drops down.
Yeah, I know we've done some work on Black Ridge, but that spot, maybe for a while, I think.
Cause the track goes right along the edge of where uh you can tell the new pavement was. And then it's just dropped down.
Yeah.
For a good three or four inches.
Kind of separated like it's trying to pull away from the rest of the road, but it's in the very early stages.
They they probably have a plan for that. They probably, I'll see what their schedules are.
Then probably another hundred foot up, another little curve. It's right in the middle of the curve. I mean, it's setting the pavement. It's just all of a sudden it's a dip down. That's where it's washed down, paved in. You hit it with your wheel and it'll not, that's your wheel away from.
No, I don't think it was on that.
I had nothing, but it went out my brain, so I sent you an email.
One last question, uh near Ingram's two twenty-one north toward Bethlehem Church and uh Radar Holler. A few weeks ago, they subcontracted out, I guess, did a little bit of milling. Um is that is that project finished or was that?
On two twenty-one?
Yeah, Floyd Highway North.
Yeah, um.
Or or were they doing just patching or something?
Probably so, yeah.
Okay.
And it may be, I thought all the plant mix was done. I'll check that one and see if there's anything else coming up.
Okay, I I had somebody that was asking me, so I know they they came back and repainted the lines, so I I sort of figured they were finished, but.
I'll find out. I'll send you an email when I'm coming.
What do, what do you call it when they fill the gaps in the, in the road where they spray the stuff in the?
Well, there's, we do a crack sealing sometimes.
Yeah, so they did some of, they did some of that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were doing that.
It's just story asleep.
Yeah. They just, they, they were just asking me.
Sometimes it's a kind of story seal if you do that.
Yeah, they were just asking me if the project was finished or if it's something that's gonna be.
Oh, no, no, again, I'll tell you something more.
Yeah. White ants.
If, if you get a chance, just shoot me an email.
Alright, yeah.
I'll let him know, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sandy Flats, is that on your list?
Yeah, uh.
Okay, and if you want to, you can, also, um, uh, for our many travelers from Floyd County into Christiansburg, what, what's going on with Christiansburg Pike and Pilot Road, mainly Pilot Road?
I think they, they were, they had some, um, they were doing some paving work through there.
Yeah, because that's story seal and that's gonna be it?
Yeah, if, if that's what, I haven't been, I didn't come through that way.
Well, you might wanna go home.
Yeah.
Might wanna go to Christiansburg now, like, just so you see what.
Yeah. Um, same contractor that has been working in Pulaski and then they, you know, maybe, same contractor, maybe different crew.
I know. Yeah.
So they're, they're, yeah, it's, yeah, they did, they did great work, done great work in Pulaski.
Yeah, well, not so much here in Montgomery or Floyd or.
Whoever did the work on six fifty-eight, Big Bad did a very good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't been down there, okay. Take a ride. That's Superior?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's strange.
I did notice coming down this morning that it was a crew cutting the brush away from these road signs. I appreciated that because somebody in you couldn't see it.
Hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Like we was talking the other day, I believe that ice storm sort of weakened the limbs because it's drooping more this year.
Yeah, they got, they got down, they never, they back up.
Some of these side roads, it's like you're driving through a tunnel.
This next big storm will fall along.
I figured the next ice storm, we gonna really have fun.
Yeah, I'll take snow over ice, I will too, I will say that.
Any day.
Yeah, if you can push snow, you can't push ice.
I guess that's how we handle.
Alright, thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Make it there.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, as you know, uh, the county was awarded another one point two million in grant dollars from Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development through round two of our scattered site housing rehab program, so um, they have a list of documents about this long that we gotta do before we can get under contract for it, and so I know that you all have access to those in full.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we broke them into four categories just to try to get our, you know, help us all get our arms around it. The lien documents, um, you saw a sample of what we've used in the past, and we are asking Steve Durbin to review those just in case there's any. Most of all these documents we can't change because they're handed down from on high, but the lien documents we can modify, so we are asking Steve to review those. So that's, that's kind of the first item, as the main, uh, the main change to that from when you all did this five years ago was, five years ago in the project we just finished, uh, it's a five-year lien on each house, but the, the rules changed so that if it's more than fifty thousand dollars worth to a house, it could either go to ten or fifteen years, the lien would be on the house. So that was the main change that was in there.
Is that value or cost?
That is the cost of the work, um, that's being, is what I'm understanding.
Could I add?
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
I wanted to interject something, you was talking about the lien, um, I asked Kim about it and let me see. Let's see, I would ask you, so, uh, I'll wait for that document, I read majority of it, you know, got down to contractors' responsibility and the county responsibility. But, and I guess I'm being more than, life happens. We rehab a house and it's completed house, it's got five-year lien. What happens if that person passes away? Does it go with their estate? If they don't have an estate, does it come back to the county or?
Yeah, it, it would stay with the family, um, and there's, you know, it, it depends on how they have it set up, assuming they have a will and everything, that it goes to the family. Uh, we get that question a lot and it's something that, it's, it's the reason a lot of people don't wanna do the program because it stays in the family, but for that five-year period, if another family member is not qualifying income-wise, they can rent it out to someone who is income-qualifying until that time period is passed. So for that time period, it has to be someone income-eligible. Now, oftentimes there might be family members that are income-eligible, they might live in the house themselves, or they might be a child or grandchild or relative, but that's what the, that's what the process is.
So it's not like it's reverse mortgage?
No, the county, no.
You know, a lot of people don't understand that reverse mortgage, I mean, they have done, ruined their kids really.
Right, yeah, right, right.
Because I, back when I was doing auctions, I did a couple of them, because Uncle Sam or whoever of them had the money, as soon as they found out they passed away, started wanting their money.
Right. I can tell you, I'm glad you said that too, because if something happens, person signs this and then two years later decides they want to sell the house and go somewhere else, um, they do have to, the, the loan is forgiven for every month they live in the house, a, you know, prorated portion is forgiven. But if they leave before their years are up, they've gotta pay back the remaining portion of that, and that does come to the county. And that's just to try to make sure that people don't do the program in order to flip it.
Yeah.
You know, just to, to try to protect the investment that you're, so that money, if they did sell it and um, then that money would come back to the county in order to be able to do other houses in the future, like it would, it would be program income, they call it, that would continue to do that kind of work. Does that make sense?
You know, as far as I know, we've never hit, we haven't did that many. You know, you, you got people that don't take care of their parents and stuff, and then maybe we help the parents out, and then
Yes.
passes away and then kid that never done anything before's got a free house.
Right, right, right.
I just don't see that happen.
Yeah, there, and, and you all still, just like always, if, if they lapse in their taxes, you know, another generation lapses, it's just like it would always be, if, if, if they get so far behind, you still would have the option to, to sell the house.
And that would.
Just to, just to clarify, that money, if the sale were to happen and the repayment of a, un, unforg, unforgiven portion of the loan is come, comes back, it doesn't go to the general fund, it's earmarked specifically for the, this program, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Just wanted to put that out, clarify.
Thank you, yeah, it does, as program income, it has to continue the work that it came from the roots.
And also that applies whether it's five, what he's talking about, five-year, ten-year or fifteen.
That's correct, right.
You just mentioned five, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood it's under whatever scenario.
That's right. If more than a hundred thousand dollars work is done to the house, it's gonna fall in the fifteen-year category.
And then if somebody passes, then somebody has to give them in or move in for the remainder of that fifteen years.
Yep.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
I didn't mean to get you off track, I just see.
No, 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 that's okay. No, it's an important question. It's really important, we get that a lot, so I appreciate you asking it.
No, that's an area, yeah.
Right.
Um, so we have the, the lien documents, we have the New River Valley Regional Commission contract with several attachments.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
As you know, the grant itself pays the regional commission's work, and they do a tremendous amount of work. Every house has to be income-qualified to the nth degree of paperwork and follow the, the work throughout. Um, I'll skip down for a second to CERCAP, which is the Housing Rehab Specialist. They're the ones who go into the house beforehand, identify exactly what needs to be done. And it's not just bringing it to building code or identifying the major needs, like there's something called housing quality standards that they've gotta bring anything up to whatever that basic level of standards is. And then as, after a contractor, well, the CERCAP Rehab Specialist draws up a work document for the work that needs done to the house. And we get under contract for that, and then they oversee that work. They come out to each house once a week usually to, to watch to make sure that it's happening appropriately, and then they sign off on the completion, as does the owner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the last one, item three, additional pre-contract items, as you saw, there's just, again, this is the same stuff you all have done before, but there's just various, you know, nondiscrimination of to promote for local businesses to get on the work and for us to, um, try to buy supplies locally and hire people locally for the work. Those kinds of things that are required of us to, um, to advertise. We've got a slew of ads going in the paper today to kind of cover all those pieces, so, um, the only, the only thing that I did wanna call out when you're doing the action later, uh, the first one is the lien documents, subject to legal counsel, uh, Kim's already captured that. And the regional commission contract, there's one of those attachments, it's a pay-for-performance. That's really between the regional commission and DHCD, and they're still kind of hammering that out a little bit.
Right.
So if you all would just approve that one, subject to DHCD, um, concurrence, appreciate that.
Okay.
And also if we approve, I guess whatever Steve's looking at will approve for whatever
Is.
Changes in.
Changes or recommendations, yeah.
Yes, please, that would be great.
You know, this program has changed the lives of, of a number of people in this county. And, um, you know, to be awarded a second grant, I think speaks highly of, of your team, of the New River Valley Regional Commission's team, and everybody involved. Here locally in Floyd County, our contractors, and I just am very thankful that the state saw the success of our phase one and awarded us the grant for phase two. I think we've learned a lot, I think that, uh, anything that Steve needed to look at has been looked at, that is correct?
Um, I have not, uh, Steve has not reviewed the lien documents. In fairness, I got them late last week and I just sent them to him this morning, so
Right.
in fairness, I've, yeah.
Was there anything else he was?
I only meant to talk to him, uh.
Was there, funny, was there anything else that needed his going over or was it just the lien documents?
Uh. Everything else is what we have to do.
Yeah, same, yeah, same template, yeah, cut and paste, right, okay.
Hold for.
Right, exactly. I wanted to mention real quickly on this, um, we are hoping to get the high school building trades, um, students involved in one of the houses.
Yeah.
I met with them again yesterday on that.
Excellent.
One of the potential houses is just five minutes from the high school, which would work out really nice. They would, there are pieces that they would do, they would do the framing, um, the, and the roof and electrical and plumbing, um, and insulation, and then we, we would be working to try to have, you know, someone else do the other pieces around that, but I'm really excited that they're, Mr. Schnee was open to that, they've been great talking about it.
Yeah.
Super great.
Yep, and this is a substantial reconstruction.
It is a complete, which is, which is a, a new build, like the house is so bad that it.
Yeah. Right, basically, a new build, like we just completed our final.
Yes.
Yeah, project upon, uh.
Yeah, they used to do a lot of that.
Scales?
Yes.
Back, back when we had the stone age down.
Well, it's great that we're coming back to it.
It's a little.
Well, that's how we got our ticket booths at the high school.
I know, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, there's all kind of projects that was done.
Yes, yes, so I'm hoping, the devil's always in the details of this, but we're hoping that we can, can work it all out, so.
Yeah. Yep, alright.
Alright, any other questions on that?
Since it's a nonprofit, could some of our, uh, A students, if they're interested in building trades?
What, what was the question?
A students.
Oh, A students, yeah.
A students.
Yeah, if they've had, um, uh, Ross needs said, uh, they need to have been in at least his, his round two building trades class, not, not the first
Yeah. Right, right.
But if they've had sufficient training for whatever he's got going on, I think, I think he'd be open.
Yeah, I bet he'd use an extra set of hands.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Well, we got them interested, we need to keep pushing them on.
I know, and then we need some of them to become contractors themselves, so.
That's right.
That would be all.
That was his youth on Frenura program, I've already got that in mind, like if we could
Yeah.
figure out a way to, to try to encourage them and, and that kind of thing, so.
Kind of funnel, yeah.
Alright, well, thank you all for that, um.
Alright.
And, uh, I mentioned to you real quickly, the USEDA has, uh, another big grant offering out. It would be eighty percent funds for economic development projects, infrastructure, uh, sites and buildings. Um, and so I'm looking to try to find that twenty percent match. I met with the Toronto Commission staff, three members on, um, Friday, and I was pretty encouraged. They, um, they were especially interested in developing sites, that's the piece that they were, more so than expanding an existing building. They were interested in, um, seeing us finish out phase two with developing pads over there. We think we'll get twenty-seven acres of usable building pads someday, but we can get all that done, so I just wanted to let you know, I'm still working that.
Good.
I've got, I'll be bringing that back to you the next, next time you meet or as soon as I can for, uh, some consideration on y'all's part of that, so, anyway, just wanted to let you know, alright.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Good.
Before you leave, I wanna say thank you for following up with that payment that you
Oh.
pulled out of nowhere. I appreciate that. That was, that was really helpful and thank you very much for your diligent follow-up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. It was.
Yeah.
I gotta give the re, Christie Straight with the regional commission was also very valuable in the process and, um, yeah, we, we, we were just patient and, and fortunate to get to another person before we had to close it out, so.
Patient and persistent, thanks, so thank you very much to your team.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, alright.
Thank you.
P squared.
Jenny went to get more.
Oh.
Ten minutes ahead.
Maybe hiding from us.
Unbelievable.
Ten minutes ahead, wow. Remember that after a while.
Will wonders ever cease?
Yeah, I don't know if we'll keep it or not.
We will.
Such confidence.
We'll try, we'll try.
That almost was like a threat.
We'll try.
Y'all got a meeting this evening, so we got.
It's the goal, let's turn it off. Thank you. Sir, to, to fill the void while we wait, um, maybe I can give a little update on the towers?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the check site. Um, we've actually sent, uh, all the documentation to Steve, Steve reviewed them. He actually sent it to the landowner, um, the landowner has received them. They were sent by email scan and they were also sent overnighted in a box, as Kevin would say, because the last paper one didn't work out so well.
Mm-hmm.
That's the one that got chewed up. Um, so I'm waiting for her to review the plots and the survey and sign them and receive them once we get them back moving forward, so that's, that's been a long time coming.
Excellent. Uh-huh.
Um, and continued conversation in the other, uh, opportunity.
Okay.
Um, I'll throw a slight mark, so, um, had a good conversation. Kevin again went out there, um, gave them some.
Don't sit down.
Gave them a couple of options to think about, they were going on vacation.
Don't sit down.
Don't sit down.
Yeah.
Oh, you ready for me?
So, hopefully we'll hear something soon, so we, we got some good moves here going.
Yeah. Not that lucky, you don't get to sit down yet.
Alright. Okay. Alright, so I guess you got the package and you seen the, uh, options we had for the, uh, wheel site.
I'm sure it didn't mess up a cardiac.
I think it's, uh, it's a little shocking.
It's just, yeah.
You got that little pointer thing?
Yeah, right here.
Hey.
You're welcome.
So I talked to TRC yesterday evening and talked to one feller, and he kind of figures it best to do it all at one time, but then I talked to Ms. Morando and she said we could, she'd be happy to come talk with y'all, you know, uh, but she couldn't come today. Well, she said we could probably do a, a section of it. My understanding of her, you know, she, she'll say is recommend doing with the pond. And then we could do the driveway and have a place here where they could put some green boxes, maybe a tee where they could turn around and come back out. But she said we need to leave a part of the road for future. And we could probably take the island and make a, in and out. Put the pond in and try to work an area in here somehow. She'd be willing to try to draw something like that up. Now, we talked about the boxes last time, and I'm gonna back up on this, and I've been talking to my drivers and, um, got another issue bringing for y'all if y'all don't mind today. The, uh, we had like thirty-four boxes, but the weekend's the worst. But the weekend's the worst, we got, I think there's fifteen boxes at Willis and coming by this morning, they, during the weekend, they getting the field as much, it's a weekend traffic. Probably, some of that may be coming from other places. Um, so. If you want to, I go back and talk to her, see if she can fix us something in here. Now, we may try to cut it down to fifteen boxes for now. And maybe do a smaller pond. But that's about the only options I think we got.
But if you, if I mean, if you do the shorter version with the smaller pond, when you add the rest of it, you're gonna have to expand the pond.
Yeah, you have to expand the pond.
So you're gonna have to go back and redo parts.
So if you wanna keep, keep it there for, for a future road, just go ahead and do the pond that we have there now.
Oh, gosh.
I.
What about?
Do it, do it.
I'm not trying to jump in front of you, I just got, I wasn't here the last time. We had talked about some available funds that's come available.
Do it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Do, do we have a total number of those?
Uh, approximately six hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Approximately. So somewhere in the half ballpark.
Yeah, just under seven, seven hundred thousand here.
That, that would cover the half of, about half of the cost of this option.
Be able to push options, right.
Correct, that is correct.
Yeah, there's no which options, I mean, you know, um.
This is option three.
Well, if you do the whole shooting match, it's what, one point four or something?
This option.
Mm-hmm. Uh, well, one is, I believe this was option three.
Option one is one point four, option two is one point two, option three is one.
One, just.
Twenty two.
Right, right, but I wanna make sure that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, well, this was option three.
Correct, so that would be just under one point one million.
So, would be well over half.
Correct.
If you get off three of them, you lay out.
Now, this was option one, wasn't it?
Yeah, that.
Uh, I just shot, it, are you getting your email? I just shot you the, uh, all three.
Yeah.
I just wanted to compare.
They want all three of them, please.
Cause that's two?
That's two.
Alright, go to one. Right, so that's one, that's the one point four.
Mm-hmm.
Option two is one point two.
And then one point oh two two.
And one, one, number three is took out a lot of your swales, you just got a, a regular ditch on one side, there's no swell. And then there's no, there's no ditch here, it's all runoff and it's all, I can't see it, is it six percent?
Yeah, I thought it was six.
Yeah, the other, the other ones had five percent, this is uh sixty feet and a hundred feet, I mean, six feet and a hundred feet rise.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Which I think a lot of runs have got more than.
Your expertise, which one do you think would be better off doing, cause you work with the guys, you know, with.
Well, I think this here works just fine, option three.
Yeah, so. I'm really frustrated.
Mm-hmm.
I am, I'm beyond, a- and it's really nobody's fault, but. I don't know how we could have worked this out a bit differently. Either way, we're spending more money. Because if we got somebody in before we purchased the land and said, okay, what is this gonna cost us to do? That would have cost us fifty grand probably, maybe more. I mean, you know, we probably could have gotten Nuka or, you know, somebody from our engineering folks to, to look at it. I just. It is hard for me to look at a convenience center that's gonna cost one million to build.
Minimum.
Minimum. And I mean, we have to do it, but I, I, I just. I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around this whole site and what it has now turned into and I'm, I. I'm just frustrated.
It's not gonna get no better.
Yeah, I understand, and I mean, I, I get it, but I mean, I'm ready, I'm ready right now with route eight to just, and I might have, should have asked David, but just ask them to give us that site, fence it, because the bear were back. And, and just use it. I, I mean, we're running out of places to throw garbage. Um. We invest a million dollars of taxpayer money, I mean, we might as well go to pickup like Carroll County has, I mean, a million dollars.
And that's not.
We don't have millions of dollars.
That's dirty thing, that's no fencing, that's just great, this is just grading work.
Huh? I know, I mean, I just, I'm sorry to be at this point, but I'm just, I just. Everybody, everybody knows I'm fiscally conservative and I just, at this juncture, looking at that price tag. I um, I'm having a really hard time with this particular convenience center.
You know, if you start setting boxes outside the road, the bears, they're gonna have them to root, so you wanna know when you go out to the east.
You're, you're, may I speak freely?
Yeah.
Our back is against the wall.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm gonna throw this into you now, hopefully tomorrow, my goal is to remove all the boxes, low family dollar. That's uh fourteen boxes. I'm gonna move eight boxes at the truck garage, because the bear's been started there.
Right.
And the employee, does recycling count as six birds there two weeks ago? I've been getting pictures of birds there. It's, it's gonna be, it ain't, it ain't good to have bears and public mix together, when you slide a door and then there's a bear there. I got, I got a report that you're still eating breakfast just this morning.
I gotta go.
So.
That, that's what I've been worrying about since this whole mess started, is the liability of somebody walking up, sliding the door and being attacked.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, they had a picture there a day, middle of the day, they had slaughters when they walked around and that bear was standing there on the corner of the building, you know, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they know where the boxes was and they don't come back and check every so often.
To see when we put them back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's when the restaurant's open again.
And I'm gonna try to keep them at Simmons, and we're trying to add a couple there, but uh. We've had trouble the last two weeks, people come in putting in construction material and, and one of the tires. So, we'll put some cameras up and see how that works and, and try it for a week too, but if it keeps getting bad, then we'll pull them in, we'll go, we'll have the ladies go to Facebook, website and all that, make announcements hopefully today or tonight, Danny and. And then my goal is to drop off some roll offs in the morning and just load the boxes up as we come through.
So may I speak freely as well? I believe that maybe we need, and I'm not calling into question your credentials or your uh knowledge or your, you know, everything that you bring to the table. But maybe, I mean, if we're gonna spend a million dollars on just grading, maybe we need to get somebody in here who, who can work and I'm, I'm ready to go to Richmond, which I am, tomorrow, and talk to DWR and see about, I mean, we need some money, we need some grant money to help us build these things. Our citizens just don't have, I mean, we don't have the money to continue to go into debt over trying to figure out our waste situations. And I am um, I mean, I don't know if there's a consultant in waste management, I don't know if there are solid waste folks that do this for a living. I, I know that this was a department that you inherited, that you took on, that you've done an excellent job with. And I, I can't speak more highly of everything that you've done to this point. I just don't know if we can, I mean. We're gonna be down to one site for disposal of garbage and the transfer station. Because if we keep moving, they move, they'll move, and we'll be closing Hummingbird and we'll be closing, you know, we'll be, we'll be moving everything and then we're just gonna be to the one we finally built and the bears don't seem to be able to get into or haven't yet. And then you're gonna call increased traffic on a road that shouldn't have that much traffic, it's already busy enough. You've already got tractor trailers flying down that road and I don't know, I mean, this is, this is a really difficult situation for us to be in and I think we owe it to the citizens of Floyd County to be prudent and wise in how we spend the money to fix this problem.
Well, we're learning here and it's, it's a costly learning, but we need to keep looking for more property and.
Yeah, I get it.
And it may be, and sometimes it's willing to pay more money for property that we can see that there's less grading in. But you, it's, you, you gotta balance it out.
There's trade-offs.
It's, it's a, I mean, it's trial and error and.
But trial and error with citizens' money is just not something that I'm.
Just, just, I won't say, this one, well, that's not just for grading, that's turnkey, right? Is that for completing the whole site?
That's just, that's a pad and all.
That's just grading.
It's just grading.
Just grading.
Uh, that's just a.
Just grading for me.
Cause I ain't like fencing or nothing.
Well, I know it wasn't fencing, but I was thought, that, so that's not the grading and the gravel, pad?
Uh, let me just verify.
You know, I think we're gonna have a question, but she's looking at it.
I'll wait, I might take this down, not another random throw here.
Well, go ahead, I kinda opened the hole.
I'm gonna stay on topic.
I think I just questioned this, if I can say that, I know the price is high, we wasn't expecting that. But this is pretty much what we agreed to for each of the districts.
Let's just get rid of the dirt.
Each of the four districts, minus the empty transfer station itself, but.
Well, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of dirt.
Yes.
Ship and topsoil, uh, stockpiled topsoil, you can read it, sure. Uh, strip and stockpile topsoil, it's, you know, seventeen thousand seven sixty, respread topsoil seventeen thousand seven sixty. I'm not sure what this is.
Net export, so that's getting it out.
Getting it out, yeah.
Yeah, nine hundred eighty two thousand.
You're just, yeah, so, you're looking at almost a million just to remove it.
You're looking at three hundred. You're looking at three hundred forty handling truck loads.
Mm-hmm, and this is with an assumption of topsoil c- condition, uh assume six inches of topsoil.
Well, they'll, we, we can try to save what topsoil we can get, but you, we gonna lose a lot of it because of uh grabbing the stumps.
Right.
And then, you know, if you ain't got topsoil, you spend more money on lime and fertilizer.
Right, I'm just saying, there, this does not make it, it's not a hard line estimate, it's just an estimate.
Yes.
It's thirty three thousand cubic yards.
Any idea what they'll do with the stumps and all that stuff? They won't bury them there?
Well, we can bury them, we can haul them off, we can try burning them, we can just stop filing them lots.
Put them in a corner and let them just naturally.
It, but.
We can bury them on our own property, can't bury them on some other property.
Can, may I, Mr. Chair? Are you still looking at your question? Okay, so that's the answer. Um.
Yeah.
Is it possible to explore leasing some land from VDOT, like where we have it on route eight, maybe get it fenced, looking at some of those other options?
Well, we gotta be careful with, with route eight, that's a major road, they're gonna keep, we're gonna have to come off of the edge of pavement at least twenty, not thirty feet, and then you're gonna lose.
That cuts you down, that, that site's not.
It's not, no turnover.
Well, you got the creek, you got the, yeah, creek.
You got the creek, you got everything. That site's fine for what, what we got there.
What it is, yeah.
As far as a fenced in facility, it's not.
It's gonna be too tight.
It's not deep enough.
It's too tight, cause the trucks is gonna.
Not like Indian Valley is for the three sided.
Yeah, it's, it has.
Even, even Fike and Pike, there's some depth that allows us to go in.
That's why I was like, that side out at dusty rough might work.
Yeah. Yeah, if we wanna pay.
Yeah.
Well, we're in that situation now, we either gonna have to, we either gonna have to pay more for the land and cut down on the expense of grading or we get cheap land and we end up spending it on the grading, that's, that's, that's the two choices.
But it's either one. Yeah.
Think we got ahead.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm using my microphone here, my voice is getting a little weak on me here, but um. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've just have a lot of heartburn about spending a million dollars to move dirt, I mean, that, that's just tough for me. Um, the way I figure, the, the primary reason that this has got us to this point is mostly the bears. I mean, some of it I think has to do with, we've got private landowners that just don't want us to continue to have the dumpsters there, but when you go.
The way they have them.
But when you look at the further problem of why the dumpsters may not wanna still be there, or why they don't want us to keep the dumpsters there, goes back to the bears. I mean, at, at the end of the day, it all traces back to a bear, the way I see it. So that, that's our primary problem, but the way I figure, we're not the only county, the only locality in America that has bears. Right, I mean, there's tons of places that, that deal with this problem or ha- has these things. What I would suggest if we could maybe consider is, we've got a lot of smart people that work at the county. We got a lot of smart people that are in our community and um entrepreneurs and business owners. But what if we took some of these designs from around the, the country that we can locate for these places that have these high bear populations? In coordination with the style of trash trucks that we have, that will work together. But instead of reaching out to these companies across America who engineer these bear boxes. And I personally spoke to one of our local fabricators and just ran this idea by him, but what if we took those plans of some of these bear boxes that we know our trucks can work with and send it out to some of our local uh fabricators? And said, hey guys, can you make us a box? I mean, even if we just did a test run, have them make ten boxes and then put it at one of our, our highest bear populations and just see if it'll work. I mean, I would rather spend twenty five thousand dollars on ten test boxes to see if they work than spend that amount of money just, just to move some dirt.
We've done.
We, can I, I don't know if it was before y'all came on or not, but I know we, we purchased some of the that, they don't like you call them bear proof boxes, but we purchased some of the boxes that was like you had out in Smoky Mountains in Tennessee. Was, was, within two weeks, somebody took a picture of the bear, he figured out how to trip it and open it.
But there has. There, there has to be a better way to that.
I mean, there.
Once, once these bears get habituated to that resource, they're going to do anything to get to it and that's, we have a.
But, but they actually had a picture of the bear doing what a human did, they tripped the lever and opened the door.
Right.
The thing I say with we back then, all of you respect, we, we agree and disagree opposite, but uh.
Right.
We get to throw the money out there experimenting for stuff that don't work, eventually, we don't have enough experimenting money out there to get on our path. It's just way out of our nature.
Since I've been here, I think we bought bear boxes three times.
What, but what's the biggest problem with a bear box?
They can figure it out. People, we have a people problem.
Yeah, people.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that like down at Terry's Fork, and I don't know if those were bear boxes, but they had to latch, but people would not shut the door.
Yeah, they, those were bear boxes though.
Yeah.
But I mean, surely, between all of us, we can come up with some type of ingenuity to, to figure out how to fix the problem.
The, the other thing we have to consider, I'm sorry, the other thing we have to consider is, I mean, primarily the percentages bears. However, we're getting more and more um owners who either don't want it there anymore.
Well, because of the bears. Very expensive.
Oh, it was probably before the bears. No, it was probably before the bears.
They're selling lots, or they're selling their, you know, they've, you know, not to be morbid, passed on. So, th- those properties of kindness, um, we're seeing slowly. Kind of just by fruition, just being eliminated.
Yeah.
So we wanna prepare for that as well, prepare for that as well.
We lost two up in the Buffalo. One at Sheer Road and one at Buffalo Mountain and Royal Church. Because this was back, I think before you even got here. The wind was blowing trash out of the boxes all over people's property. And they just got, you know, I'm done, you know, moving, so we lost the sites.
Yeah, cause like Ms. Kim said. Had a lady by property come in the office one day and, and she very voicey. And says, I ain't gonna use your prayer language, she said, but you know, why is there boxes on my property? And I said, so, where are we talking about, who are you and, you know? And then she explained and, and they moved here from Florida and bought a big piece of property over in Indian Valley for the property. But across the road was one little piece of pie. And she said, I want them gone, I said, they'll be moved tomorrow. And she said, well, let me ask Clinton, said, will we get inmates, we'll get out there and do it, well, she didn't wanna wait on inmates and she. She'd come down there so often and, and give me a count of your bags she picked up. And, you know, it's just places like that plus the buyers, uh, Lick Ridge was the man, his wife wanted, he, she wanted the bear, the boxes to be there. He finally said, I'll let them stay, my wife's been passed so many years, but the buyers, I said, I just can't. Take it nor so, and, you know, we got them, we moved them. And the inmates got there and cleaned it up pretty good, I think, thank you still happy, but.
Does Lick Ridge have the ability to be a fenced in site, or is it also a very narrow, not very deep site?
It's, it's very narrow.
Yeah.
Have we ever had anybody locally explore building boxes?
No, but we've, we've bought bear boxes three times, the first time we bought them. Uh, the public knocked the latches off. They knocked them all off, and we bought them again, and. Then, what the people didn't knock off, the way the levers come fixed up, when you raise the truck, they was breaking them off. Now, the gentleman at, uh. The church we pulled them off of, Daniel's.
Yeah, Avon's Chapel.
Yeah, that gentleman fixed out the lever, the work, for the trucks should double. We had to, the buyers had to do something before they moved them, that was working. But then it's got to where the public would never close the doors again, or, or the buyers learned how to work it. So we, we've gone through this three times in the past. And then, uh. And, you know, I, I showed you the pictures of the other ones, but the only thing about, about that, you gotta reach up into it. Like you're at the state parks and raise the door up. Now, how will that go with the public, I don't know. I got a feeling that they'll leave them open for some elderly people.
Elderly are not gonna be able to do that.
But do they have, do they have the spring on it that will close them there?
So, when you're talking about, you know, I, I think. Sort of thinking out of the box, pun intended, is not a bad idea, but if you're buying or. Asking somebody to create. And this would be a question for Steve Levi, is that, do we have a liability issue involved? And that, you know, because we're just not, you know. I mean, we're a position of authority and. To try and get somebody, if they're not in the business of doing this. You know, there may, I, I don't know, but that would be something I would wanna explore, I, I love the idea of shopping local, using local. Getting our ingenuity and our brains that we locally have here to help us fix this problem. Um, but I, I think we'd have to look at the liability.
Part of the reason you don't have spring loaded doors.
Correct, right.
Yeah, you got another option.
I just put a sign, say, use your own risk.
Then you'll, then you'll, then what they're talking about will definitely reoccur in your town.
Say, listen, it's one of the two, we can pay higher taxes and spend a million dollars or use it your own risk. Whichever you, whichever you.
And then when you go driving Daniels Run Road and see trash every which way.
But, but, when you put a sign up, you're, you're recognizing a potential problem. And admitting to a problem with the system.
Well, in that, in that regard, we should put signs up on all the dumpster sites to say, use it your own risk, you'll get attacked by a bear.
Yeah, but.
That's not what you're sitting here to do respectfully.
Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying.
Respectfully, that is not what you're sitting here to do, you are, you have taken an oath. To protect the citizens of this county.
Well, we're getting a far.
Not really.
Well, to a certain extent.
A million dollars.
Now, I was, I, I had a problem with this system to begin with, I was one of the ones that. Joe and I remember, I don't, I think it were here when you moved here. Uh, we remember what this county was like prior to the site, to green boxes at all.
Yes, sir.
Every road you traveled on had its stump site.
Yeah.
The green box system came in, it's not a perfect system. Uh, I'm still concerned with these gates, but I, I like the timing of the gates, you know? So unless you got somebody running in the middle of the night, there's no excuse to go back to that old way.
Correct.
Now, I expected it to be expensive, did I expect one million dollars a site, no, I didn't. But, I don't know that, I mean, we, we ventured down this road. Uh. We've expended some funds already. And I understand, nobody wants to spend one point two, one, one million dollars on a site. But unless we're, unless we're gonna sell this site and find a flat site that doesn't need any grading and pay. Three times, I mean, everybody in the county knows, it's just like when the, so when the factory down at, ended up in Woolline was first coming to Floyd. Once word came out, land was cheap, but it wasn't for them, when they were at Versite, they was looking for, so they ended up in Woolline. Cause the property owner checked the prices, it's same thing's gonna, I don't mean it ugly, but same thing's gonna happen now that the public knows we're looking for sites. And it's the government, they're gonna, they're gonna ask as much as they can get for it. So, we're gonna pay on either end.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could send a letter out or on the website and say, you know, do you, would you be willing to?
What's your other option you said we have?
Compactors.
Compactors.
You have two compacters, big enough site where you pull in, circle out, drop your can, trash, go out the gate and. Truck can back up, load one compactor, take it off, dump it, you got another compactor working.
There's one right in Rogers, if you wanna see it operate. On six fifteen.
I mean, they're expensive.
Um, what's expensive compared to?
I mean, compared to a million dollars to grade a site.
Well, you.
Build a pond.
You could, you could probably. Shooting off hip, you could do, you could do an acre, or maybe a little less, pin on the site. Put your two compactors in there. And walk away.
Do we have five of them, right, five sites?
You need at least four, uh, in my, my, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
You'd have to have four. But you could. You go under, under acre, you don't have to get the DEQ.
Right.
Load your cellar pan, you could, I think you could do with a smaller pond, the cellar basin pond. Um, and maybe make it work better.
You're gonna have to have two compactors, so that's eight compactors.
Yes, sir, that's eight compactors.
And they run off electric, right?
They, they're better off on three phase. Now, Willis, you don't have three phase power, you can buy a transformer, change single power into three phase. And.
Christiansburg Pike has tr- has a.
Right, but Frank and Pike's working for us.
Right.
You wouldn't have, I mean. You could, you could look at the land you got, but with a, with a compactor, I think you're required. I think you're required to have, have a personnel there, so, somebody trying to bury a body or. Somebody's curse and all, you know.
I, I was wondering about that, we just about have to have a man at every site, right?
Yes.
And most counties that do this.
Do.
They hire retired people. You know, they, they, they work under forty hours, they're part timers, so. You're not required to, from my understanding, you're not required to, the benefits of insurance. And a lot of older people like to have somebody to talk to and. And there's a lady down in Georgetown, my boy was, we took trash down there and. And she said, don't you mess up my site, and she walked around all the time with a little thing picking up trash and. And that site was clean, and she was rough. You brought lumber, now you had to cut it less than two foot, take it back with you.
That was my next question, if you have them compacters up. Somebody shows up with a bunch of building material and stuff like that.
Yeah, take it to the transfer station.
Yeah, but I don't know, some of them get pretty hostile and, and you know.
Yeah, but you got, you got cameras and a witness.
Yeah. You may have an elderly person get assaulted on that stuff too.
Well.
Traffic compactors run about twenty eight.
Every time there's a change, there's a few that.
Oh, yeah.
Depends on.
That's come to talk to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Twenty eight to a hundred and ten.
We almost have one this year, so.
It also gonna depend on your volume too. Yeah, you know, we're saying two per, but depends on your volume too.
Well, you can, you can get a whole lot of that.
Sure can.
I mean, you know.
And you brought this up before, but this is, this is a slap in the reality face right here, I mean, it really is.
I mean, we could always, I'm just shooting off hip, we can always save that property for later and, and look for something different. More gr- and more. Not as much grading, or we could have them look at that and cut it down to an acre. Or less.
Yeah.
But the smaller pond. And, you know, keep it under acres so we gotta get involved DEQ and. And so forth, cause where the pond is, was most, most, in my opinion, police grading would be done.
Yeah.
So is that what you, you want us to kind of? Revert, look for property, give you guys options to revisit?
Crossed out some trash compactors.
I'm looking at some, I'm looking at some other property, but I ain't got no answers back yet.
All right, but I guess I'm just being pessimistic this morning instead of opting, but, uh. Then if compactors don't work, we're right back square one. You know, we started having issues with them, we can't get people to man them. You know, can't find a way to put them, you know.
Well, that, that's true, but the, the other problem is, we're having trouble finding people to work at the transfer station. Cause they won't be picking all this bear mess up.
Yeah.
Much less work at a, 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 a compactor site.
Why?
I say, he's having trouble getting enough people to work at the transfer station, at, much less at a, you know.
We're, we're having tough time with CDL drivers.
Right.
Picking up the trash because they're tired of picking up bear, bear mess. So, that, that's the struggle.
And that's the big struggle, now far as compactors, all they gotta do is just.
Great people.
Great people, the public, so, yeah, you know, this, you know, before you come back, you, you know, we don't want somebody no tires, no. Stuff like that, and this is all for household trash. And there's gonna be people gonna try to piece, throw some lumber in there, it's a small, who cares, but. Yeah, there'd be some training.
You say no lumber, that means no lumber.
And, so.
And then they either take it to the landfill or down the back road.
Yeah, if you can't find.
Or you have another box that you throw that in to take to the transfer station.
Pay more. To hire them, I mean, it's a, it's a rough world right now.
Yeah, it's six of one, eight dozen of a dozen.
There's not a perfect solution.
But. I, I'm at, I'm at my last straw, I don't know what else to do.
Right.
I've, I've, I've thought and dreamed and.
Dream, nightmares?
Yeah, trying to figure some, some good way of doing it, but I'm just one person, I mean, y'all wanna send out somebody and.
I know I'm gonna get in trouble for people out here in the public saying this, but stay in trouble, so what's new? But you know, in state of Virginia, about the only way you can hunt bear is with baiting and dogs. Which both of them's illegal in Floyd County at any time. So we need to get that lifted so that hunters during the fall. Can actually hunt bear during the bear season, instead of just sitting there waiting for one to come walking by.
If you can get them to do it then.
Yeah, yeah.
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 I mean, we run the bears into it. When my wife goes out and sees her flower beds this morning, you know, she's gonna be raising cane, cause. I guess there was some grubs come up last night in the fire toward it. Flower beds all in pieces, you know, yeah, so. So we, we're gonna have big problems with them showing up at your house, you know? I think there's a video that done had that problem, yes, but, you know, they gonna start coming in. Trying to find this trash, you know?
Well, my situation was, I think people are starting to trap. And that poor bear got caught in a trap, managed to extricate its paw by either chewing it off or doing something. Not meaning to be graphic, but this is the situation that we have. So. I agree, Joe, I think that the state. If they're not gonna let us take care of the situation, then we ought to try and find some money to help us prevent. Citizens from being injured when they're taking their trash.
So far the Frank and Pike sites worked, we've had.
No bear, right?
We've had to re- rework the electric fence a time or two.
Okay, but that's been it. Yeah, so no bear.
They're industrious, they really intelligent.
All right, anything else on this one? Y'all gonna make the decision, Dave, let me know what's, what, what we're trying to go next, right?
Yep.
So, so do you want us to look and give you guys more offers of property?
Yes.
I'd like to have it. An ex, uh, bet, a presentation maybe on the compactor issue, how would we need new trucks, how would we work the compactors? How much space it would take for compactor convenience centers? Instead of green box convenience centers. What, what acreage would you need for a couple of compactors on convenience center site?
Also, if you're going to look at them to them, look into the life of the compactor, what's the most, most.
Right.
Normal thing to go wrong with it maintenance wise, it has to be.
Well, if we're, if we're getting compactors that will change our truck use significantly.
Well, it would change our truck, it's, it's just a roll off.
Right.
And I've got a file in my office with a lot of the information, not all of it, that you're requesting for right now. But, yeah, you just use roll off and, uh.
Manpower is decreased.
Compactors will work off a single phase. But you don't get the compaction. So, at, at a three phase, you, you might get. You'll get compacted forty yards in a forty yard container.
Oh, we're developing a better relationship with the Afco representatives, so perhaps.
I don't know what today's costs are, but I know back when we were doing, two thousand four, when we were doing the schools. Cause we still might give three values to Indian Valley, it's twenty six thousand dollars a mile.
Well, with the transformer, it can take the single phase and give you the three phase.
Correct.
What's a safety issue for our citizens using these compactors?
Well, the safety is that you don't have a kid playing in it, and someone that's paying attention wants to. Who's on the other side of the factor when you're loading it? And then if someone pushes a button or someone reaches down real quick to grab something out of that compactor.
Right.
And then if you put the wrong things in there, because.
So, so nobody operates the compactor at any of these man sites, except the person that is there.
Employee.
To operate the compactor, so.
Employee goes over the key, turn it on.
Correct.
And then walk around it and look to make sure that what you're talking about.
You put it up against a fence and then.
Well, you don't wanna just fish, you wanna.
Understood, but very little space.
You don't lay any between so that it can work either or.
Well.
And it ain't that big of a hole.
No.
But it's just a, it's, it's a safety issue, I mean, we could try it, just leave the switch on, say, dump your trash, push a button, but.
I suggest you go up and look at that Rogers site with Montgomery.
Montgomery, okay.
Yeah, with Pilot, on Pilot Road, you go with the Montgomery waste guy and gal or whoever, and you go look at. And it's one side you emptied into, I watch it all the time when I drive to Christiansburg on Christiansburg Pike and Pilot Road and. I, yeah.
But I can, I can try to bring a, a salesman, here at a salesman.
Okay.
Talk with us that, that same day, give him all the questions and, and back up.
We'll get some info. We'll get some info, some comparisons after that. If you'd like the salesman or, you know, if you're interested, get that person here.
I do appreciate.
It's not, no, it's on hold.
You're welcome, I need something to.
Yeah, this is not, yeah, I mean, it's just.
Get you out of trouble.
Yeah.
And what about, I mean, we can also look to see what it would cost locally for. Um, to see what it would cost for the bear boxes.
Yeah, I think you need to check with Steve.
Would you be getting into a patent issue on that?
I don't know, that's just an idea that I have, yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not knocking the idea.
Yeah, just gotta check with.
Just a lot of things we have to check out, being a governing body, authorizing.
Y'all good beating on this, this dead horse.
Yep, we can dig it up a few more times.
Uh, I got some bids on scale house, you know, I come to y'all a long time ago, had a contractor, he said twenty, twenty-five thousand. Bids come in. Fifty-five to ninety thousand dollars, so.
It was fifty-five to ninety-four thousand dollars.
That same contractor that said twenty-eight, no?
No, he never, he never put a bid in, which I, I wrote, I wrote the bid hard, you know, turn your bid in, said, I gave him like three weeks. To do it. Couple callers said that we can do it later, I said, no, the bid date's the bid date. And then I told him I had to start within fourteen days once the, the signed the contract. That probably hurt some of it, but uh. It's a twelve to sixteen, I don't really wanna get no smaller, so, so I, y'all.
Those in our packet?
I'll try to keep it under twenty-five. And I'll bid out some work, piece work it, we're trying to get.
Yeah, it's something we need to get done.
My boys and landfill and.
Don't forget the guys with Ross and with the high school.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Seriously. They could probably build it and then drive it over.
Yeah, you might have to get somebody to pour the pad, but they could.
They could come out.
They could frame it.
No, they could build it in their, their shop and drive it over.
Well, they'd be built on site, which they usually take two, three hours a day, they come over and.
Yeah, knock it out.
And, and jump on it. And we could jump out in our spare time and take a slow shot for a day, run over there and. And get some of the boys that's recycling and say, it's for a couple of hours overtime.
Where's it, we get work releasing?
Once we get the slab poured, plumbing set, plumbing, plumbing, rough plumbing, floor set. And get it framed up as a piece of cake, which I ain't, I ain't forty no more, but.
You got some that you could point and say, go do this though.
Uh, you can bring over their hammer and my hammer.
That's something we need to get done.
But you'll, you'll check with Ross and them, they might be able to help you out on some of that.
Alright, and uh. Y'all made decisions on the tires, right? You got, you got, you got a price, gonna go with weight, right?
So it's, it's in your packet, again, the um, it's on eight D I I.
I think all we gotta do is make that decision and rewrite the ordinance or set a date and let the public know.
The other, there's two of them. One says, um, solid waste fees tires. And then the other one is solid waste approved fees, and that's the ones that you guys discussed in February. Um, and we're just revisiting the tires only.
I'd like to wait until after public comment to do anything on this.
This is discussion, the, the action item is not until.
Right, it's our own business.
Just to discuss if, if, cause Jerry wasn't here, if there was any questions or.
Oh, you don't blame it on me, are you? You gotta knock one off to climb on.
You'll be here next time.
I would rather have been here, but.
I know.
No, there's, things happen to everybody, so.
We need to move it.
Can you, somebody just overview what the discussion was the last time, where we were at, where you were at, just a quick.
The, the overview was just, just the annual revenue difference. Right now, it's approximately, it's about a four month average, but if we took it over, it was seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Expenses are a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Um, same weight, perfect scenario on each, if you can touch every tire and capture them. We probably need about four additional staff to be able to capture all that for perfection. If we weighed it, the annual revenue would be at three dollars, well, the weight. For sixty-eight thousand, but, but the revenue would be a hundred and twelve thousand. If we did it by, is that right? With the weight. Three dollars, it's like nineteen cents. Nineteen cents, excuse me. So, so nineteen cents, the annual revenue would be one fifty-five. At twenty cents, the annual reven, revenue would be one sixty-three, if we did a flat rate, my apologies. The annual rate, touching every tire, we'd have to add approximately four more staff, which would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand. To obtain a hundred and twelve. Thousand.
Oh, we'd be great, yeah.
Nineteen cents.
I just don't understand why four more staff are needed if we're.
To touch, for perfect, to touch every tire and capture. You can't, you can't capture them without.
Counting them.
You can't capture, count them, split them and make sure small tires, not if they're coming in at seventeen hundred tires. And, or thirty-four thousand pounds. We're not, we're not able to do it now. That's why I said a hundred percent perfection, to make it an equal percentage or an equal dollar amount.
There we're going back to manpower, we can't even get help now, how are we gonna get four more to count tires, so how do you gonna get to?
Yeah. So basically, according to my calculation, which I think the smartest pencil in here. But to break even, nineteen cents per pound. And then as we talked before, I, I don't know if we're using this conversation, not your forgiveness. When we talked about if you had four tires or less, we just charged three dollars a tire. I think truck tire was fifteen, and pickup tire was five, so. You should have, you know, extra work with the weight, no, you come in with a load of trash, you got four tires on. Go with it.
Throw the tires and go on.
Yeah.
I think as much as we have to handle them, we should go twenty cents. Make it easier to figure.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, my recommendation, my recommendation, I think it's twenty-one, but. Just to cover extra expense, but y'all the board, it's in y'all's lap.
I would think you. You're doing it by weight, period. Then it doesn't matter if you have a mixture of car tires, tractor tires or whatever.
Tires as rims.
Whatever, you've gotta weight.
Yeah.
Unless it's four tires or less.
Well, I understand that, I'm talking about for, you know, like on the farm, I, I, I used those tires for drags. And they wear out, I gotta do something with them.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily like throwing them on the brush pile, cause it excites the sheriff's office and fire and rescue and neighbors and everybody else. They don't like me burning them on the brush pile, so especially just close to town, so we don't do that anymore. So as I'm replacing those, I bring those up there. If I bring them forward at a time, it's gonna cost me twelve dollars.
Right.
If I bring them all at one time, they gonna weigh me going in, they gonna put them off and weigh me going out and give me a ticket of what I owe.
Right.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Then we get this new, new building built. I don't see the problem.
That's where we need to get that building going.
Yeah, I mean, once all this goes into effect, we ain't got the building. Our goal is, we gonna go ahead and hire somebody, they gonna work out of the blue shed with Jimmy. They'll have to put Jimmy for a while.
Right.
But there have to, there'll be more legwork, shaking scales, getting to the person with the ticket and so forth, once we get that. Yeah, hopefully.
This is a replacement person, it's not in addition to.
No, it's replacing, right.
We haven't rehired a person who has left.
An open position.
Correct, yeah.
So, that's the goal, I think we can make it work once we get this last little. Sliver took care of. Go ahead and pull, pull, pull the thorn out and see if it's blood.
That's it, run, run for us.
Thank you, Martin. You'd rather be out here building a house than doing this, well. Oh, Lord.
Always thought.
Yeah. That would got me on the public comment period. Is it intended all persons attending the meeting of the board regardless of handicap and conditions shall have an opportunity to participate. If any person present requires any special assistance, please let the board know in order that arrangements can be made. When you come forward, state your name, district you're from, limit your comments to four minutes. And it is a one-way conversation. If you have additional comments or questions, you just want to be remembered. I thought that was Frank, but.
Well, you quit on winter.
There you go.
Frank Rudis, Indian District. And I don't know how to say this in a kind way, but I'm gonna do the best I can. Y'all talking about dirt roads? Like I've done since nineteen seventy-seven, get you a tractor. Going on Indian Road. Lord's will, continue to die. Hell. Ice storm. Ain't got a. Get up there. That bigger. Half a mile dead road. It's in Kalenda's District. And I would request that every time I grade the road, and I would like to say I've done it since nineteen seventy-seven. It's like two or three days later, here comes a road grader. Road. Was told to come. And fix it. He said, I can. And I'll do some for you. Talking about where you come up there, that's, that's at the road.
Right.
That, that fence has been there since nineteen seventy-seven, it was a split rail fence. And the bank was about that high, and when I cleaned that property off, I had. Uh, Billy Quizzleberry, when he's alive, cut that bank off. And I put the post where they're at now, and the road just keeps going this way. And Gary Shaifan, he lives at the end of the road now, and he's got a taxidermy building over there. And I've talked to him. I would like to have the state maintained sign moved. It stops where I put my mobile home in in nineteen seventy-seven, right at the driveway. There is three houses and a business just past that sign. They're entitled to have state maintained road too. I don't need to go out there and take care of it also. Cause they'll grade to the sign, and they'll back down where I told them Jerry Spittle let them turn in a, in a little area. But Gary Shaifan said they're more than welcome to come all the way out to his property and turn, he's got a good place to turn out there. And I asked him, where would you like to have the sign at? He said, would they put it right here where you go down to his son's house and goes up to his house, and that gives them room to where they can back around. Alright, now that's three houses. That's beyond the state maintained sign. I'm fixing to build a rental house, a small one, at that sign where my trailer used to be. When it gets up and finished and rented, there's gonna be another one just past it. When it's done, there'll probably be another one just past it, and there'll be another one just past it. So I'm looking at, we need some help on the road. And I talked to her about the grindings, where they grind these roads up. Why can't they put that on the road? It packs down, you don't have no holes no more. And I have talked to them when they paving Duncan's Chapel Church Road, and I have begged them. Don't waste your money on that blacktop. That little stretch that they go from the road, it's up on the hill, they stop. Then it starts this to the top of the hill. I said, would you please just take that blacktop that you're dedicated to use here? And add it to the blacktop and get to the top of the hill. We ain't allowed to do that. I said, well, you ain't using no common sense, I said, cause I have to come down and scrape this, cause every time you go up, it goes like this. And the worse it gets, the worse it gets, and I gotta work on it. And I need some help. And if they got a problem with the state not, uh, having a way of moving the dry millings. Bring it out there and dump it, I'll spread it with a tractor, it'll help me. Now, last time I asked to get anything done, it costed me. And the reason I say it costed me. The, uh, the highway department man was here, and he came out there and met me and he said. I will give you a permit if you wanna pay to have it done.
Appreciate Frank.
You moved across, don't you?
Yeah, Chip Camp, Little River.
Good morning, y'all again.
Good morning.
Uh, thanks for letting me talk again. Um, I'm Chip Camp from Little River District. Uh, I apologize for the way I appear, I, people ask me, I tell them I got in a fight with V dot. And lost. I wanna continue with the rural rustic road program. And some points that I haven't had the opportunity to make so far because of limited, limited time. But one of the things is that, um. That the program is based on vehicle counts. And I can, I mean, it, it, it's supposed to be applicable for roads between four hundred and fifteen hundred vehicles per day. I've been there for five years and I can guarantee you, I have never seen any sort of vehicle count made. On that road. So, I'm not sure how they're basing. How, how the whole concept is based on vehicle counts. When it's just a dirt road and, and nobody's made those counts. So it, it, it's frustrating to me that these decisions are made without any sort of. Proper data to go by. So anyway, the, the, the idea is that if the roads have traffic volumes between four, four hundred and fifteen hundred. Vehicles per day, and eighteen foot paved surface with two foot shoulders is recommended. That doesn't exist, and I'm, I'm, I'll tell you right now, that we're coming up. On. Schools starting tomorrow, and those buses are gonna get on that road. And I can't tell you the number of times last year that I came upon a bus going the opposite direction. I had to stop back up, back into the nearest driveway, which could have been. Oh, I don't know, quarter mile away, and I'm backing all, all the way up to let this bus go by. You know, and, and I, I respect the bus, I'm not gonna try and take it out. So. Um, the other thing is that. Last week, we had a pretty good rain, rain, it wasn't horrible, but it was pretty good. The road's a mess. I've contacted, as I always do, I contacted, uh, through their website, V dot, and said, please come repair this thing. Bottom line is that these repairs go on and on and on. And as a taxpayer, it, it bugs the heck out of me. That we're chasing good money after bad. It just, it, it seems ridiculous that this is an ongoing problem. That is, it's taken care of, but it's a Band-Aid and another Band-Aid, another Band-Aid, the first Band-Aid falls off and the second Band-Aid. It's crazy. Anyway, I, I truly appreciate you, you let me talk. I just hope you, you take into account. I just hope you, you take into account that this document. Is not being followed, even though it's a state document. I just don't understand it, and I do, I'm sorry, I'm running over just a little bit. I do, I did set a. I'm gonna email. Mr. Clark. And we're gonna set up a meeting, and I'm gonna go over these issues with him. Just so I don't have to vouch you guys on it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
John Nichols.
Hey, hello.
Hello, y'all. Let me buy top nickel. Little Nickel Brothers down here, I wanna discuss the tire situation just a little bit. I get that it's gotta go up. It's pretty obvious, you know, it's been a dollar my whole life. For real, it's been a dollar. So I get that it's gotta go up, but doing it by weight, I think is a mistake, simply because this has been the rainiest year I can remember for. These tires will have a gallon of water a piece in when we load them. Gallon of water's eight pounds. My truck hauls fifty tires. That's four hundred pounds. If I do that once a month, we're looking at, you know, forty-eight hundred pounds that I'm paying for in water, not tires. So that is something that I think needs to be addressed. The other thing that I think needs to be addressed is, I don't think you should go up a lot at one time. If you go up a little, and then maybe a little again, you're not gonna see a problem. But I know for a fact, a few years back, they jumped. When they did, they were in ditches, they were in dumpsters. At the end of the day, VDOT was picking them up, carrying them to the landfill. Your guys are pulling them out of the trash at the landfill. You're still dealing with the tires, and you're getting zero dollars. Doesn't matter to me as a business owner. I don't care. I'm gonna pass it on if they're fifteen dollars a tire and it's sixty bucks a set. It doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna pass it on to you. When you get your tires, you're gonna pay for it, you know. So it's not a big deal to me. It's just some things that I think should be considered when you're making the decision, you know. Um, and like I said, I've seen it once already since I've been in business. I think Calvin Reed was. Over the landfill at the time, and he told me, he was like, you know, soon as we raise this price, dumpster for full of tires. And everybody that come in the shop would be like, oh, well, if that's gonna be fifteen dollars, sixteen dollars, just throw them in the bed of the truck and I'll take them with me, you know. And we've already started seeing that, cause people are asking us, you know, they're saying, hey. You know, is these tires going up? Is the disposal of tires going up? And we're like, well, not yet, you know. Well, still, people are saying, well, just go ahead and throw them in the truck and I'll take them with me. That way y'all don't have to deal with it, you know. Um, I was gonna ask, you know, if we're gonna be paying for all of our trash when we haul it over and everything else. What's my tax dollar doing? But after seeing the million-dollar site, I know what it's doing, so no need in asking that question. Um, all in all, that's what I had to say. So, and it's just something I think you should take into consideration. Um, I spoke with a couple of the garage owners who agree with me on the water situation, you know. I don't know if anybody considered that, but particularly truck tires. The other side that's gonna be tough for us is I don't have any way of weighing every single tire that I change. You know, and if I do, it's gonna cost me a ton of time, ton of manpower. But if I'm over here trying to do this and do it right, and you're charging me nineteen cents a pound on these tires. I don't know how I'm gonna do that, you know. I get that there's an average, but at the end of the day, the average is gonna cost me, the business owner, money. Tire is my least profit business in my garage. I make less profit on a tire than anything else in my business. If I could just do exhaust all day, every day, that's what I'd do, cause that's high profit, and I like it. Uh, again, you know, tires are low-profit business, where, you know, you're already not making a lot of money. Start losing money on it, then I'm probably just gonna step out of it and not do tires at all. So, and then again, like I said, I think you're going to dealing with your tires through the ditches, through the, you know. People throwing them in the dumpsters. I've already heard that somebody threw a bunch of tires in a dumpster, and, you know, that's crazy too. So, just letting, you know, you know, that's my take on it. Something you might wanna consider before you make a decision. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
You too.
You too.
Carrie, with luck.
I see the solutions have not got any easier. Than twenty years ago when I was here. My basic thing that I'm talking about today is, we gonna start school tomorrow. The route that I drive. I'm gonna be rubbing paint. Literally rubbing paint, cause they have not trimmed the roads back. And they're getting down to the point where I almost like to request just one-direction traffic. On the roads, because there's no place to pull off. To pass or anything else. I drive electric bus. And. You wanna know the pop of my opinion of it? Uh, when the time runs out on it, send it back. Uh, it's got some peculiarities that people need to be very aware of when they drive. There's only two of us that really drive them. Other mechanics, some of the mechanics drive them, some of the mechanics won't drive them. So. That's my thing is, and I think if there's a way of trying to encourage. Property owners. To trim their lawns back past the ditch line. It would be helpful at some places. Uh, there is some places where the people's yards come plum out to the road, they do a good job. Uh, but they're, but they're far and few between. In some places, when you go through the woods, that nobody cuts. You got no farmers now much out there with side mower machines. They used to trim the roads. The state used to do it too, but they decided to get rid of them. So, also, all I gotta say is, y'all gonna be seeing bills coming from the school board to repaint buses. More lights knocked off. And my biggest problem is, is the kids possibly could get hit by limbs. Coming through the windows. At this time of year, we're gonna have windows down. And we have to miss the traffic if somebody's coming at us. We gotta get out of the road some ways, I perform. And. We sweep leaves out of the buses all the time. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope y'all's solutions get easier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
That's all? I don't even have correspondence or anything. That goes in there. I like it. Correspondence from our veins. The fair, record, public comment period, yeah, closed.
Hey, Carrie, he didn't name my name on that road, did he?
No.
Yeah, run and ask him just for the record. I think I know which one.
I think I do too.
Hey, Carrie. Why don't we have smaller buses? Why don't we have smaller buses?
Used to be.
Easter Creek?
Easter Creek.
Yeah, your district.
Easter Creek. Easter Creek.
Yeah, Easter Creek.
I thought that's what it was, but I didn't.
I can't believe they drive that all the way out that way.
Just seeing them driving up and down.
Yeah, I thought they were supposed to keep those buses around town.
I don't see how you.
That's what we were told.
We've been told a lot through the years.
As crooked as that road is, it's steep in places.
Serious.
I think that's part of the, I think it's reflective of part of the.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that's reflective of part of the reason he says when you're done with them, be done with them.
They're terrible. Driving an electric bus is terrible.
That's a good road to test them out on. Alrighty, we up to old business.
And if I'm not mistaken, unless I missed something, on ten A, we will table that until other things.
Yeah, table.
Yeah, we didn't think that was enough.
Yeah, until other things are presented to you guys. Um, ten B would be the approval of the solid waste fees, the reviews that we just discussed. And this also would include sending the information to Steve. Cause he would have to amend the ordinance, solid waste ordinance with the current fees that you've approved.
Mr. Nichols had a point that I had thought about in the past, but I didn't know how they. There's no easy way to adjust that water and tires.
Water's usually stolen when we have to weigh them to ship them out as well.
So we pay for them.
So we pay for, we pay for that on our end.
The other thing, I believe, cause we talked about if it's a huge anomaly, like if normally it's whatever, two thousand pounds, and all of a sudden it's. With this approximate same amount of tires, and it's now, you know, forty-two hundred, you know, there's gonna be questions. We could kind of work through things.
There's an allowance to us.
Correct, so.
There can be allowances made.
I think so, you know.
The laws are equal across the board.
Not, not great, right. Just wanna be mindful if there's.
So that's another one. Just pass over on the action part to Steve is done, right?
No, we need, we need the action to give it to Steve.
They need to know action and the numbers to get to Steve.
For the ordinance.
So he can review for the proposed ordinance.
And update the ordinance.
That over my head. So watch out.
It should read, it should read with review and updating of ordinance, and then with staff signature.
So watch out his fiber on it.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think that, um. I think the water issue is one thing. I, I know that everybody's paying on the waterway. Um, but I do believe that the other salient point that Mr. Nichols brought up was. Um, jumping too high. Um, I know these are recommendations. I know Jenny, you've worked really hard on this, um, in concert with Mark and Kim. And, um, but, I mean, maybe nineteen cents is too high. I mean, solid waste is never gonna be a money-making proposition. This certainly doesn't make it a money-making proposition. Um. You know, this is one of the services we need to provide, um. I just, I just think that we're. I think we will end up creating more of a problem. And, um, I think we're already starting to see that by going too high. Those are just my thoughts on it right now.
Just, just so you know, the, and because we heard you when Mark did it, I can get the exact number, but. The average at nineteen cents was just over three dollars. It was less than four dollars apiece. So it was the average if weighed per tire.
Alright, so we're going from one to three.
One to three, correct. I just wanted to throw that out there, but it's not a huge variance.
Yeah, I got just.
Using the nineteen cent is the.
Correct.
Yes, using nineteen cents.
Yeah, I, I agree with Linda. I think, and with Tuff, that I think going up this much is gonna cause more problems than it'll solve. So maybe an increase of half. Of what we proposed, and then if it doesn't cause a problem, we can see. So instead of going to three dollars for a tire, go to maybe.
And not weigh them at all?
Maybe weigh them, but not at nineteen cents a pound also.
So that would be decreased, okay.
Half, yeah. Do that at half the rate also. So instead of trying to recover all of our expense, recover half of it. So instead of nineteen, nineteen cents.
You're saying roughly ten cent.
Correct.
Ballpark.
Correct. And two dollars a tire instead of three.
And we do understand, I don't need to speak for you, but each time we, um, change the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing.
Oh, yes.
And I get that, but.
That's not the issue, right.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just stating that we all understand that that is part of our situation. I just wanted to.
Yes.
I, I think, thank you, some good points were made, and I think easing into these fees.
But you are talking about weighing them and using ten cent.
Yes. And then if you do the four or less, you know, then it's two dollars instead of three.
Yeah. Well, I definitely think weigh-ins is the way to go. I'm willing to move off the nineteen to ten or twelve. Somewhere in that ballpark. And let's see where it goes, but we're. I think we're gonna be right back here in a very short time going down the ten.
I do too, y'all. We already. Already weighed down, oh, just at that. Were you thinking really bad? I hear the wheels turning.
What's the ten cents?
Eighty-six thousand, eighty-six. Revenue? Uh, oh, I'm sorry, eighty-one thousand six hundred, approximately.
Annual.
Annual.
It's thirty, just thirty thousand dollars. Sorry, thirty thousand, about thirty thousand dollars difference. From the. Nineteen cent.
What's that equivalent to?
No, well, the annual, if I'm understanding you, Miss Bickel, the annual revenue for nineteen cents is approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, I have a, I have a hundred and twelve on my sheet.
That's the flat rate. It's, that's the flat rate. The flat rate on, in the green, that's if it's a three-dollar fee and a fifteen at a perfect scenario.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's a flat rate.
Sorry, okay. A hundred percent touch of tire, every tire.
We, we figure the nineteen cents is equivalent to about three dollars.
Just over three dollars, correct.
So at ten cents, what is that equivalent to?
Uh.
A dollar twenty-five or something?
Just under, yeah, just under two dollars.
So what would the cents be, like it exactly about two? Twelve?
About twelve.
Mm-hmm.
I've guessed.
Twelve to.
My calculator, my calculator's not working very well this morning.
Twelve to thirteen. It'd be like one point, it'd be like point one, two, probably three and change.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Yeah.
So the rev, the annual revenue is about.
Yeah.
Annual revenue for twelve cents would be how much, based off of this?
It would be. Be about eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two thousand?
Give or take.
Give or take, yeah. That's just.
And our expenditures still say.
Hundred forty-six?
Yeah.
We'd increase from twelve thousand to eighty-some thousand.
At the top. Thirty-seven thousand.
Or revenue, we'd increase from seventy-six hundred to eighty-some thousand.
Do that just, if we wait, increase from seventeen. For hidden in the right direction. I, 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 I agree. I still think that we could be within three or four months, say, hey.
I don't think it'd be three or four months, but that's just, you know, I mean, I guess we could do a friendly winter. Just kidding.
Well. And, and I know it's gonna be complicated. It's not gonna be smooth, I know that. And I know we're not gonna make money. I figured that out January of nineteen ninety-two, when I stepped on this board. I knew there was never gonna be a money-making project. But I'm looking at it from the standpoint of moving in the right direction to try and offset. Instead of just going to the taxless and raising the real estate rate to cover the cost. Cause you're gonna lose so much money at the time before you have to start making some of it. I'd rather go to the user fees than I have to.
General tax.
General, general taxes.
Still gonna end up in the taxpayers' lap.
Well, it does, but it's.
I know.
Yeah.
And people may not change their tires as often, which will affect the safety of their, on the roads.
Well, and a lot of people, and, and that's nothing against none of the businesses here. Although a lot of people that do their tire business outside of the county. Where in a real estate increase, they're paying for part of that cost. We're here, we're going, trying to get to more actual users. Uh, I'd say at least twelve, I'd go to twelve. And I'm one of the reasons I'm willing to come down, that's what it takes to get the waiting process in place.
Point one, yeah, if you did fourteen cents, thirteen, it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand. So twelve cents, I was a little shy, it's around ninety-five, ninety-seven thousand.
Twelve, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Fourteen is one twelve, so in between there. Thank you.
Ready for motion?
I'm uh, yeah, I'm ready for it.
Alright, I'll make a motion, um. I'll make a motion to do the price per pound of tires at twelve cents and adopt all of the fees that we have uh, passed since February and have staff sign signatures and get our attorney to review our solid waste fee schedule.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, four.
Four.
In that, just need to be, we understand, we can't go any higher than what's in what we propose. We can go lower, but it can't go higher once it's advertised.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Red.
You're ready?
Okay, on the motion.
I'm sorry, what would you do with more or less tires per tire?
Two dollars.
Two dollars, yeah, I think that was what the consensus was, yeah, two dollars.
So we have to change that as well. Two and.
To also include a two dollar per tire fee for small piles.
Per, for a small tire, for a large tire, it's fifteen, the last discussion was fifteen.
Yeah, for tractor tires, we'll leave that at fifteen.
Large.
Large tires.
Keep it at fifteen, okay. You.
All tires.
Okay, uh.
I think two dollars.
The approval of solid waste fees review and moving forward with uh, the attorney reviewing and updating of the ordinance for public hearing for weighing of tires at twelve cents per and then the per tire for smaller automobile, two dollars and larger tractor tires at fifteen dollar per tire.
That's for four or less.
Four or less, thank you, yes.
All major.
Ms. Cook and Book.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
No.
Okay, we.
We will be back in about four months redoing it again.
We have a consensus. Go to next, alright, on the, the next um, is, it's been updated, um, the approval to schedule the bo- joint public hearing with the planning commission for the land division ordinance for August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Which happens to be the same day as our
Meeting.
meeting.
Are we coming in early for it, or we have it at seven o'clock?
That would be up to you, I would that would be up to you to, if you're gonna set the date, what suggests.
Well, it's up there.
I would say maybe six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
For the public hearing, I I agree with that, I think there'll be a large turnout, it'll be important.
Yeah, public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let people get home from work or on their way home from work, there'll be enough people that can sign up. Just make sure that the signup sheet stays open and flexible so that if somebody is delayed from getting off of work, they can still speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Alright, and I'll second that.
It's room twenty-sixth.
Nope.
Okay, on the, on the motion
At six.
for the approval to schedule the joint public hearing with the planning commission for six P M. on eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-five for the land division ordinance and to go to advertisements and such, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
No.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
May I make one request? That this um, comparison of current subdivision ordinance and promote, proposed land division ordinance be made very easily accessible on our website?
If as soon, and we needed approval from you guys to be able to do that, but that is the plan, yes ma'am?
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a very nice um, comparison that was put together.
Yeah, she did a great job. So the next is, um, if I may. Okay. Um, the next is just kind of a reminder, um, this has been brought up in the past, um, it's also available on our website. Um, which is our um, paper of choice or publication of choice for notices. It's Cardinal News, this is the exact, this is exactly what's on our website for people to easily access, um, the link. It currently has more than twenty-nine thousand surrounding neighbors, Roanoke, it's, I mean, and it's moving throughout Virginia as a whole. You have to be certified to be able to be a part of this, um, but it's for official notices, government, business, legal, like we put our public hearing notices.
Right, just like we had, right.
Job postings, all this kind of stuff, yeah, so this will now
Right.
go on the Cardinal News as well as our um website and for courtesy purposes, our Facebook. So publication and website are code, Facebook is not, but we just do that to hopefully get it out to as many people as we can.
Right. Right.
Um, with that, I, to be able to do that, because we lost Floyd Press, we lost, um, Roanoke wasn't reaching many people.
Right.
Um, we had to get an order from the judge, so Judge Fleener, yes, so that again is on the website for you guys to um, just review
Which we did.
and it's up there now, but I just wanted to let people know, um, just to remind people, because we've been so acclimated to either Floyd Press or Roanoke Times, that this is where we're going now. And we did a little, I mean, it's not a huge, but we did a little cost comparison, then a notice for Roanoke Times, uh, for us to do something similar for like the public hearing for Roanoke Times, it was almost four hundred and forty-seven dollars and for Cardinal to be able to do that, it was a hundred and twenty-six. So there's some cost savings in there too.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the, the cherry. Thank you, sir, for letting me do that. We now are at new, new business?
Yeah.
Um, so then first, we're going to um, kind of go back to Ladina, her presentation when she mentioned the three folders. The first one is the acceptance of the lien documents, which is designated as eight C I. as to the final form review from the attorney and then for staff signature.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it if you're ready.
Yes.
Good. Alright, on a motion to eh, uh, the acceptance of the lien documents as presented by Ladina Martin earlier as to the final form review of the attorney, once completed for staff signature, Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, the second, again, per the discussion with Ladina in your uh, eight C I I New River Valley Regional Commission contact folder, it's the approval of the task order between Floyd County and New River Valley Regional Commission the Community Development Block Grant. For staff signature.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, on the approval for the task order between Floyd County and New River Valley Regional Commission for the Community Development Block Grant for appropriate staff signatures, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
And finally, um, I did spread this out, I can put this in the um, however you'd like me to word it, um, but the approval of the docu- documents in the, again, what the Li- Miss Ladina Martin, um, in the other pre-contract items folder which is item number, it says five, seven through ten and thirteen, which references
Mm-hmm.
the appendix, nondiscrimination, grievance, self-assessment, anti-displacement, fair housing certification and the Floyd program, yes, and thirteen Floyd program design.
So moved.
Second. Alright, on the approval of documents and other pre-contract items folder, five, number seven through ten, thirteen is just discussed, Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
And then lastly, um, the final, well, Ladina also discussed was the um approval of the agreement for the rehabilitativeation specialist services, Circap, um, item, let me bring that up unless you guys remember it better than I did. There it is. So this is, um.
Circap.
Yep, Circap, which is Southeast Rural Community Assistance Project. This is between the county and um, Southeast and Circap herein, and it's for uh, rehab specialist for the scattered site housing rehabilitation project phase two. So moved.
Second, I think they have been invaluable, we have a member of Floyd County's
Yeah.
uh, resident of Floyd County who's on that board and his, his expertise and willingness to drive almost every part of this county has been uh, invaluable, absolutely.
Alright, on the approval of the agreement for reabil- rehabilitation specialist service, Circap, uh, Miss Bechtold?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Upstaying.
And Mr. Turman?
Yes.
And the reason is a potential or an actual, um, conflict.
Conflict.
Not sure it is, but
Hmm.
better to be safe than sorry.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, and next, if it's okay, is on the request of shared drive, which is Frazier Lane, Frazier Lane Northwest, I believe that's you, Mr. Booth?
I cannot believe that Frazier has not been taken up until, I mean, seriously, I was amazed.
I I know several places that could have, and you do too.
Yeah, one's mine. But I don't have, I don't have three residences.
The only. Yes, the the only question I have is, this will be the different colored sign, correct?
Correct.
But this is not a state-maintained road.
Correct.
It's a driveway.
Share driveway.
Shared driveway, right.
If, if, uh.
We can make that happen.
Yeah, two family, one.
I I.
Who would you take it from me?
Oh, okay.
Uh, let the, make it clear.
Let the record reflect. And I can't, I can't still make a motion this chair, so.
Chair has taken over as. Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the naming of this drive, Frazier Lane Northwest and appropriate signatures and.
And signage.
Appropriate signatures and signage.
Yeah. Right.
I'll second. Okay. Um, so on the uh, request, uh, the approval of Frazier Lane Northwest, tax map number forty-two seventy-two, forty-two dash one oh five, forty-two dash one oh four.
Before
And.
In this, um, and I don't think this matters any, but right now in the form that was typed up, there is an inaccurate description.
Yes, it's a, we've already, that, it's correct on the agenda, so it is.
It's Rustic Ridge Road, is what I'm talking about, number four.
Oh, I'm sorry, the actually the.
So it's number four, within the private drive name request.
Their mailing address.
Their mailing address should read Rustic Ridge, now I don't know who did what, but
Right, yeah, yeah, see, and and they still, yeah, they signed it, um.
Okay, it should be Rust. I understand they did.
I'll make sure that that's corrected.
Thank you. It's Rustic Ridge Road.
I was referencing one of the uh, map ta- tax map numbers, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, but I will what was Ridge Road, I will um, have her, yeah, I I will have her noted, yeah.
Rustic Ridge.
Rustic, the number four, Rustic Ridge.
Ridge, got it, got it.
Yeah, the others are correct.
Yes, they are, and just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Your welcome.
Um. Yep, and the shared drive is off Secondary Road seven twenty-nine, we'll make that correction as noted for Rustic Ridge.
Thank you.
For all appropriate signatures and appropriate color signage for such lane, Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Ms. Bechtold?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Ms. Cook and Book?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I still can't believe that was open.
Thank you for that.
We have no close session, board time. I would start aware with Linda, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to uh, compliment the board on the great reservation about going forward with the grading at that expense of it it's way above what we had anticipated as a group, and I think it's very important that we be most prudent and explore again more options for convenience centers and it's it's a, you know, we we have a bear problem caused by people problems, but we need to find a solution that's workable and affordable for our
Mm-hmm.
not very wealthy community with a limited, very limited tax base, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Willingness to go round and round yet again, with the green box issue.
Thank you.
Lipa?
No, sir.
Linda?
Yes, I do, um, I uh, I wanted to um, bring this to everybody's attention, Ladina and I have been discussing this, um.
Go forward. Let me get Joe on.
This is an important uh, issue, um, so
I'm sorry.
the governor announced forty million dollars in Virginia Business Ready Sites Program grants, and it was like wonderful, great, and then I call Ladina and we're talking and we don't, we, small, small counties like ours are not eligible for this, and I've already talked with um my um, my counterparts at VACO, we'll be attending the um, uh, summer meeting, we're going to be talking about this, just this kind of thing. And um, I just wanted to make you all aware of this as moving forward, I am going to take this issue and bring it up at our government meeting as well as at our economic development meeting. Because it just feels like we don't have fifty contiguous developable areas and it's unfortunate that we can't use this for part of our current's uh, commerce center or somewhere else that we might find. Um, because some of our entrepreneurs don't need fifty contiguous acres and
Right.
we don't have the resources to support such a um, environment, and to be not able to get this kind of grant dollar is um, feels somewhat discriminatory against smaller rural counties.
And there seems to be uh, it's not just smaller rural, it's our region of the state.
Yeah.
It really excludes the majority of southwest Virginia.
Yeah, it does, and and I get, you know, a big pharmaceutical firm like AstraZeneca, who's looking up and around the Richmond area, wants these super big sites and that proton energy reactor kind of thing that's going in, and Chesterfield County needs bigger spaces, but there are a lot of entrepreneurs, smaller businesses, that we could have here in Floyd County and if we had the money to ready sites, we'd be better off, and I know some of our citizens have come and spoken to us about that here. So, I just wanted you to know that I will be taking this with me to Richmond and sharing it with our group and.
Well, I remember back when the enterprise zones started.
Right.
We ran into a lot of the same problems with the rural area.
Yeah.
And it took a long time, but the state did modify that to where, you know, just about everybody in the state could use that.
Yep.
But it it took several years of jumping up and down.
Yeah. And I mean, it, I I get, I get that our bigger neighbors, you know, east of Charlottesville are, you know, chomping at the bit to you know, grow their areas and get more tax space, but at the same time, it it does seem unfortunate that our area just, you know, our whole region, as K-Linda has pointed out, just doesn't have.
Well, it's it's southwest Virginia, then you go all the way back up into Bath, County.
Yeah, and up, up Rockingham, you know, I mean, I know Winchester and, you know, those areas are doing okay.
Far back, South San Diego.
But anything south of sixty-six maybe and just westward and down eighty-one, and it's like, it's not like we don't have the transportation available for companies, it is here, but.
Oh, yeah.
It's not like we don't have the transportation available for companies, it is here, but, yeah, so I'm gonna take this with me tomorrow and we're gonna bring it up.
Thank you.
Well, that's a record show, I turned it back over to the chairman and we're in board time.
And one other thing, if I may, um, that this is what's so important about having.
Okay.
Southwest Virginia represented within our VACO board, because if if we don't have that balance, if we don't have folks. You know, talking for our region and attending these meetings regularly, then we're just. I'm not gonna say our counterparts look at us as an afterthought, but we kinda just have to sort of, hey, we're here. We're not going away, you'd like to come and visit us. Anyway, that's it for me.
Uh I just wanna, I I'll get around to cards, but I'll thank the board for the flowers that was sent and. And I do wanna thank staff for their kind words and the cards, um. I look at our staff and it's, and even this board, kinda like a second family. Now, I don't know if that makes me the grumpy grandpa or 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 the crazy uncle, I'll leave, y'all can do a poll on that one. I think it'd be more like a crazy uncle, but I just thank y'all for for all.
Yeah, I already got that grandpa spot.
Well, you got grandpa, then I got the crazy uncle, I answered, we answered our own questions, but I just wanna thank y'all for your kind thoughts.
There you go. Yeah, of course.
Please pass that on to the other employees too.
We've been thinking about you. Yeah, we already did.
You're last. You're up next.
Yeah, board time, you got it, it's wide open here.
I I just wanna tell you, you know, Steve's supposed to be getting us these uh resumes or whatever you call it. As soon as we get them, we'll go over them, but I need a date for next week where that we can meet and go over them. And I'll just have to check with Steve and see if it'll be here or at Christiansburg at their office.
Can we do in the evening?
Just whatever suits y'all.
Yeah, I I've got Lily all week, well, not all week, but um nineteen twenty-third, twenty-second, but um. Yeah, I could, Wednesday is probably my best day, the twentieth.
You can't.
Of course, I'll have to.
Right.
Yeah, right.
She said me.
Verify with Steve, you know, what.
Yeah, the twentieth is my best day next week, I don't know about everybody else.
Good the twentieth.
There you go.
Make the twentieth one.
You see, I told you, you're gonna need to do that.
Yeah, that's alright, I'll do that. Oh, I'm always month behind, day behind.
I know.
I yeah, set it up for the twentieth.
I'll get with him, he's he's tied up court about all this week, I'll get with him, see if the twentieth is good.
Okay.
What, what time are y'all thinking?
It'd be up Steve, what time?
I'd have to do after, I have a, my first uh uh regional commission executive committee meeting from twelve till like one fifteen, they said. And then I could make it over to Christiansburg real quick, if he wants to do it there.
Well, we have to do it. I I feel like we have to do it after their offices close.
Okay.
And uh so um.
Well, that would work.
After five.
Yeah, so we'll find out what time he closes and.
Yeah, it's five.
Make sure that he's well on, so.
Meal's on there.
Yeah, meal's on there. Of course, they do have a really nice subway right next to them.
They do though, we've.
That was, that that was the. We could have a meeting in there, they got some beautiful seats.
Yeah, just just letting them know what time he says.
Okay.
I'll make sure we have available.
And you know, I just want people out public to know that I wouldn't try and be hard-hearted when I brought up about this rehab housing. I got to wondering, you know, what happens if if they get a new house and then unfortunately they pass away.
Yeah, I mean, that was, yeah, I think that was just a realistic, I mean, you're.
That's a. No, that was very. That's a very reasonable question.
Yeah, it's just realistic, again, it's reality, I think it was very uh.
Yeah, life happens.
Yeah, it does.
It's better for everybody to know upfront than it is.
Right.
I I just hate to see the county left hanging with a big deal.
Yeah.
And and it's good for them to realize too that it it whatever whatever the time period based on the dollar amount.
Right.
That they they or somebody in their family or, it has to retain that status for that entire time period.
Unfortunately, I know some families that, you know, the kids don't have nothing to do with them. And then when they pass away, then the kids probably get in fight who gets the new house, you know, so. I mean, that that's just through life, that's just way things happen. I'm all for you helping people that need it.
Yeah.
I'll shut up.
Well, we have a lot of people that need it that won't come forward to.
Yeah.
And 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 if there's any way we can make it a simpler process or something.
I don't know. Yeah, I think that's pretty much what it is, and I don't know that, you know, when you're dealing with state funds, it's hard to make it, you know.
So, that's what it is. Well, look at the school lunch program.
I know.
All those years, you had.
Oh, my gosh, I would think it's gonna show up.
Such low numbers.
Yeah.
In it because of that very thing.
Oh, I know, I, yeah, I get it.
I'm just glad our schools are still able to provide the free lunch.
Well, yeah.
Cause a lot of the children in this county, that's all we get.
Yeah.
I go back to uh my granddaughter, what we was talking about.
In terms of.
You know, where she, they got the free lunch, things like that.
Yeah.
And they've got children that. Were picky, you know, they just want certain finds.
Yeah.
But then they've got kids that eat anything you put in front of them, or they liked it or not. So it's a good time for, there's a lot of kids that that's the only meals they get.
If they're hungry.
Maybe occasionally this year or two, if we can, you know, on on some of the busier days when we know we're gonna have lunch.
Get to. Yeah, let's do it again, yeah.
Let's let's get back to going to the schools if we.
I really like that.
Sure.
I mean, it's well-received, the teachers like it, the staff like it, you know. And plus it gives us a little insight into what's.
Yeah, really going on.
You know, with the structures and stuff.
We walked in the Florida elementary, this little boy run up to the horn and said, we the president?
That was pretty funny. It was funny.
Yeah, word that got around, we was coming, so.
Alrighty, that's all I have.
Alright, um, last section, uh section fourteen, we already went over A. B, this is just a follow-up, um, been corresponding with Billy on a couple other things.
Alright.
Um, as well as, well, he will be coming with Mike Lawless uh at the seventh, September twenty-third meeting, okay? Um, festivals.
Could he, could I request if he isn't, if he's bringing any document, could he get it to us ahead of time?
Well, of course.
That way we could review it and ask, that way I can ask intelligent questions instead of.
Read.
You got it. You got it.
Well, it's just always nice to have stuff, you know.
Yeah, sure. Um, we have two more festivals going on fairly soon.
Yep.
Um, Yoga Jam and Floyd Living Traditions, they've uh fulfilled every application and will receive get the permits.
So what's this for, you're living traditions?
It's a art art center?
Oh.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's just growing and grown and now they have to kinda navigate here for a little bit.
Yep.
Uh, the administrative building, I I just need some guidance on moving forward in your packet. There's a folder that says administrative, administration building, which has the. Various specs that have gone on and changes and departmental things like that, um, it could be nothing right now, it could be full. You know, court prep, whatever you want. I just wanna make sure.
I have.
Can I say something while you're sorting? Uh, there was a comment at the meeting I missed of a comment attributed to me. And it was true, I did say that when we purchased this building and we borrowed the two million dollars, that included money for renovations.
For this floor.
For this floor.
This floor, yeah, we.
Uh, well, I just wanna make sure it's out there now.
Yeah, I jumped right on that.
And I will apologize if I if I led somebody or anybody to believe different. That when we were talking about the renovation of this floor to get administrative offices here. Uh, the other floors, that wasn't even the greatest. I just wanna make sure that's out there so everybody knows that that's, and from my understanding and what I remember, we actually came in under a little bit.
We did, we absolutely did.
Yep, we did, so so thanks to staff for that, but there will be additional costs associated with the other floors. But even with that, there's no way we could have built a building of this size for what we're gonna have in it.
And there will be some.
The conference station showed you that.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Cause we thinking that we could slide through a half a million dollars, get that up and running and double.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just wanted while you're getting your stuff together there.
Yeah, I just, I had to think what it cost to now to build a courthouse.
Your.
Fifty million.
Well, a new courthouse alone will run you around sixty to sixty-five million now.
Yeah, I was just saying fifty.
A million, a million dollars.
Two.
Just a grade, yeah.
Yeah.
And 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 administration building, the house, houses, all the stuff.
I mean, it's the truth. Yeah.
You could be on up to ninety million easy.
Yeah.
So.
So I don't know, I'm looking at.
I'll I'll take two to four million any day over ninety.
I mean, just so- some things to consider, um, especially, you know, the registrar, you know, bottom level, there's. Not a hu- huge amount that we have to do, we just have to ensure ADA accommodations.
Right.
Put some and some rearranging some, probably some uh doors and offices kind of, and then.
So.
But we will do ADA bathroom on that floor at once.
If you're gonna have people coming in, you're gonna have to.
There's there's one that's marked on, he does our glasses.
You don't have to.
Well, I know, I know you don't have to.
You don't?
No, it has to be within one floor.
But. Right, but what I'm thinking is, we've got every, the other areas closed off, you got one downstairs, one upstairs.
Oh.
If we've got, say, say we do get to the point, I'm looking down the road, we have our meeting room there. Do we want people that have to, you know, our conference room, if it does go in down there?
No, this is in the basement, they would be.
Yeah, they're on the basement.
So when you enter to go up to the uh elevator, you know, for now.
Right.
That's that's the lower level, then there's the main level, which has an ADA, or we'll make that ADA bathroom.
Well, that's what I was asking, the main level will have.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was right as far as on the lower level, that's what I was putting together.
Yeah, that's here. Yeah, she's on, she's down here, so.
Well, I know s- I know she's been there, but I'll just.
My apologies.
Yeah, that's still here.
That's her, we will have one on the main level.
Yes, and even that, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
So, I think, I mean, just for, just for talking, like I've I've had these, that we were given all of these, I mean, aren't we all in agreement about. Utilizing this space for.
Yes.
Hour, so.
With secu- yeah, with security measures to keep the board, yeah, but.
Right.
Yeah, it would be, it's all separate, because we'd have to separate, cause that's for the treasurer and the commissioner.
Right. Right.
So it's almost like it would be in, the building would be split in thirds.
Right.
It would be kind of county admin, boardroom, conference room, separate area entrance.
Right.
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 Commissioner revenue would be the center, separate entrance, you know, area, and then where the um.
Right. Treasury.
Yeah, the treasurer would be where the uh drive-through.
So the only.
And come through and touch the other side.
And they would. And they each will have access to a vault.
They will.
Right, for storage, if they want it.
Right, for.
Yes.
Well, or security, whatever they.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, if I just, my only question is, is this enough room for permitting? And everything that mark, so you don't think there's enough room, see, that was my question. Like, there's only three offices.
But there's three, across from there, there's offices that are open, excuse me.
Right.
Undesignated.
They're not designated, so.
Undesignated.
So, do you feel like that will suffice then?
Those two.
At least one of them, yeah, and and possibly leave the second one, um, but I would, I would leave, I would.
As a kind of.
Lean towards designated in, designating at least one more office to.
Okay, and then, is that, is that lobby needed to be this big?
March apartment.
And possibly both of them.
Can we do other things with it?
You talking about down on the main door or?
I'm just. Yeah, on the main level, I'm just, you know, just kinda throwing out ideas, that's a lot of space, I mean, almost nine hundred square foot.
Yeah.
Um, and I know we're gonna have to have it so that people can go to the.
Different area.
Yeah, to there, um, I'm still not clear how somebody is getting to the treasurer's office.
Right there, that door.
So this door.
Right there, yeah, down.
There's double doors.
It comes through the main door.
You come in the main lobby.
And you got a hallway.
This hallway here?
There's also that door, you have, there's really, I believe, two, two.
Hallway, I think. Two way you can do it, didn't it?
Two doors, downstairs.
Yeah.
Right, so, so from the outside, that could be an entrance to the treasurer.
Yeah, there's a door from the outside.
Yeah, but.
Or it doesn't have to be, I'm just saying, that can be a direct, but if there, so if you go through the main, there's that, see that.
I agree.
No.
This?
Um, no, you would go that way.
Come up this way.
And go downstairs, there you go.
Down this way.
So that, that's where you enter the commissioner, revenue to the board, and then go to the, yes.
This hallway.
This hallway.
There's got, okay.
Dams to the curb.
Okay.
You know, I was thinking that, considering the bank got where they could, you know, move out.
Okay.
We should go ahead and close off where the treasurer and uh commissioner is gonna be.
And get them moved over again.
I guess one please.
Well, and and that was gonna be the suggestion, cause I know, you know, we talked about the financial part of it.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to do the entire floor because of the way it's sectioned.
Right.
We could close off that half.
Right.
Which would be the board, we don't, Mark doesn't have to move right away, we can.
Yeah.
He he's got a place, you know, and his team can stay up here and then we go ahead and move those two offices, because then we eliminate the rent.
Right.
When is that lease out?
The rate of.
No, I think it just started up again in August.
Did it try to go?
I think August is the renewal, but we have the ability to.
Yeah.
Go to one month by month, yeah, okay.
I know. And see, well, and and the rent we save off there, we can apply to what the debt is on this building.
Yeah.
Correct, which is, it's not equal for the re- rent that they were paying, but it it does, yeah, it does.
Right.
No, but.
It's a big chunk, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it offsets a big amount, yeah.
Yeah, annual.
Just make sure we can do construction while the that floor is occupied.
Right, the other side, but it's closed off enough, I believe that.
But you would, yeah, because almost it's like in, because of that hallway and it's separated and sections.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
But just make sure you can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause something I learned, it it, you know, and um Lisa and Missy both, you know, they're, they have to have their separate entrances to their area, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
That actually assists us with just separating and zoning off that area for later.
We just have additional signage to put up for.
Of course, yes, yes.
For direction.
So, I guess if we're all on board, do we, I mean. Do we wanna put out some bids?
Open it up.
Is that where we're at?
Yeah, I think if we, I, well, first they have to leave.
Yeah.
And we have to evaluate what's there and then what's needed because of the. Can we spell treasure? It's God.
Okay.
That sound turn off, I didn't.
Um, we would see, cause it would be done in.
Phases.
Phases, and and where the bids would lie, you know, it could be, we wouldn't need many.
Phases.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so they're saying that the second floor offices are moving over, I saw two of the gals outside of the parking lot, so the second floor offices are moving over sometime around the thirteenth or so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
Um, like two weeks after Labor Day.
September fifteenth is the soft opening.
Yeah, they got a soft, what they call soft, uh, fold.
Yeah, September fifteenth, is the soft off- booting, but the folks are moving up and um.
Fifteen, thirteen.
I got a letter from.
Yeah, right, saying, yeah, and then um, you know, I would think, I mean, I can't be sure, but you know, by another month, we should be able to end of October.
End of October, somewhere around the end of October.
Yeah, so that's exciting, um.
So then.
Actually, I'd like to have the treasurer's office downstairs before their deadline on December the thirteenth.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think, yeah, that would be great.
If possible.
Yeah, it's moving.
That would be good.
Cause you know, that's where I get my feedback or blowback, just people that comes up, um.
Love goals.
Well.
They went to do estimates, paid their taxes, and then I got a big old iron over there and they gotta try to find a parking place, go to go in green and.
That's right. Yeah. Right, it's cold outside.
Then they gotta walk around on them steps and.
That's two months to to just.
Yeah, well, you can start working on the bid documents, you don't have to wait.
Jerry's gonna say mental health court in a minute too, don't let him fool you.
We do this, we might need mental health court.
Right.
It may, may not be feasible, I just thought that would be.
Um.
No, that would be great, and winter.
If possible.
Yeah, yeah, it would be. Especially with the fogs in August we've had.
Okay. So it's all gonna depend on when their official move out is, cause I know they have a soft close, but that's people.
Yeah, right, right.
And there's still stuff, you know, and things of that nature, because we, we also discussed October, the end of October, you.
Right, right. Oh, just put it in a pile on the lobby.
Would be the official out, because I referenced, if you go to. Because I referenced if you go to November, you know, there's still rent to be paid.
Right. So, um.
Can you guarantee a lease by June?
Up next year.
You think so?
Is for them to be out, yeah.
Is it ever? Yeah.
As long as they're still here, they're paying rent, right?
Correct, as I said, once they hit Nov- the first of each month, they pay rent.
Yeah. I mean, even if a box is still here, they're paying rent.
If they're using the facility.
If they're using the facility.
I understand.
I just be glad, I don't mean luckily, I'd be glad when the construction's over, gets construction crews out our parking spot.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And when they get their parking area completed.
They're over.
It'll make us a whole lot easier.
It will, absolutely.
And then the other thing, I just aesthetically, I would like to revisit. Doesn't have to be costly, it could be all whenever you want, but the landscaping.
Lack thereof.
What, or lack thereof.
Yeah, lack.
For our building here.
You you look like put a lot of brush on it, are you?
No. Well, you know, and then especially since.
Took me years to get the brush off the cord out of the lawn.
I thought you'd be happy that that curb was fixed.
Oh, that was fixed, it looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does look nice.
Yeah, yeah, we don't.
Tire planters.
Exactly.
I just can't believe they're watering lawns.
Low stuff.
Yes.
They water the lawns.
Low stuff. Do some stuff for less weeds, you know, plan appropriately so it represents exactly.
Everything. It's called mulch.
No mulch. Kitty cats.
Rip chips or white rock or.
Rip chips, exactly. Mulch is what we have now and.
Let me put the land staple and tart down first.
Exactly, I, we're already speaking to a couple people, so I I would just like you guys to consider that. Especially now, I mean, they got lava rock.
Did they do away with the spigot that was out there? It's still there.
On our, on our building?
No, the spigot in the in between that.
Oh yes, I believe so, I believe so, yes.
Yeah. He's coming off of the banks, the town's building.
Oh, no, and hours.
Pretty easy waiting to happen.
Yeah, that's the truth.
So they're splitting the watering, they, one hose goes to the town building and one hose is coming here to water the grass.
Yeah.
If you want the grass, you gotta mow it or something.
I don't see how they're needing to water the grass, my gosh. I know it's soft, but.
So. So I I got direction, I thank you, um, we'll we'll start talking about, and I'll get with Mark and see what is necessary to expedite it pending on the bank move out and if we need.
Well, what, since we've pretty much picked the design.
Correct.
Then they're gonna have to get the specifications.
Got it.
Yeah. And on that score, we used to get the bids. We used to see bids.
We have, you do see them now. You didn't see those because we didn't present any, because
Okay, we do. No, I understand that, but I.
We we had a cap and that was three, four and five times almost the cap.
Yeah.
But the other bids you get, you mean prior or?
Okay. Yeah, prior, I just don't remember seeing any bids lately.
We haven't had anything of it.
Okay.
Yeah. We just have to throw things.
The last bids, the last.
No, not on this, but.
No, I know, I'm trying to think of the last bids, do you remember?
I mean, Mark talked about some bids.
Animal, animal control, huh?
Yeah, I don't know.
We had that.
Anyway.
But.
I just wanna remind everybody, yeah, just wanna remind everybody, yeah.
Oh, no, you had the short bid, you have, you have budget bids for the transfer station.
And it's. What if I gotta help here?
Wants to see bids.
You probably got the worst job.
Yeah.
Alright.
All the stuff under him that he's gotta do.
It's good for him. He likes, he likes. Uh, courthouse security, signage was supposed to go up on Monday, however, due to the rain, we weren't able to, they're still gonna push it.
He likes.
The alarms were installed, they are deactivated right now. Um, correspondence with uh Brian, Rhonda, everybody at the courthouse, but especially Brian. Um, his target date to be completely alarmed and have a person and things of that nature is nine one. Um, and also has been rekeyed, so um it is moving, moving along.
Good.
Um, yeah, and so that's that's exciting. And obviously, we're not gonna do anything until we can get the signage on the doors and out front. So the public knows the direction that the entrance will be what appears to be the rear of the building where the parking lot is. So that's got it.
Alright.
That's all I have, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Where is the letter?
Now we got correspondence.
You let a fellow that's writing the letters.
No, sir.
I'm sorry?
You let a fellow that's writing the letters.
Oh, yes.
Uh, did you ever check with the jail and see if they could sort monitor it is?
Can't monitor that part, so yes, we we forward all letters and we also are privy to some um messages that have been left from a different type of institution um that we forward to the sheriff and uh Chad as well. So they get them all, um. They've reached out to the other institution uh uh due to the nature of um the change of messages that we're getting. And not, it's not pointed at us, it's mainly reflects um the sheriffs and the Commonwealth attorney. Um, both in the voicemails and those messages, so.
Yeah.
It was suggested that I possibly forward them on to Steve, um, which I can do, if that's what you've got.
He starts off good, but then post it all out the window with a couple sentences, you know.
Yeah, with his last letter.
It shows that he may be a schizophrenic or something.
So.
You 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 gonna get with Steve on that on spark, well, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's why I said it out loud.
Yeah.
So, in your correspondence folder, you have the permit fee report from Mark.
Yep. Yeah, thanks for getting that back in there, I appreciate that. And uh DSSS, DSS.
Yes, there's a DSS report for their monthly tracking. And those letters from Mr. Ryan for you to review, those looks are in there as well.
Yeah.
And also the uh statement, the July statement for SNAP again.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Staying, oh, and the AIM uh billing for July is also.
From slippery rock.
Yes.
So we're still on, we're still billing approximately fifty to anywhere from fifty to eighty thousand
That's a college there.
in revenue from AIM after payment, so that's on a six hundred, we're in a good shape with AIM billing for.
Oh. I did notice it said client paid. Why was somebody?
Outside of Floyd, the non-Floyd residents would be for.
Outside, yeah.
Okay. Right, okay, okay, gotcha.
You'll see that often.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to be reminded.
Yeah.
No, please, yeah.
All residents, i- if you're a resident, you're clear.
So, right, you are not billed, right.
If you're not a resident, they roll you and you pay, or somebody pays.
And they roll you.
Well, we, just to clarify, we ask for their insurance and we make an initial insurance attempt.
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
Kalinda, I think you were.
You got it. I'll make a motion, I made a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, that's something else.
I can't believe that.
I can't either.
Does anybody second?
I mean, it may be.
Second.
Okay, I wanna say.
It is.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know, it's been a long time.
Did anybody say?
Yes, I know.
Linda just did, I was like, did you all like this?
Oh, yes.
See what happens when everybody behaves and stays out of it.